When do I hit the gavel? After I call or before?
When you say it.
Oh, okay.
Zoom is easy.
Yeah, I call the September 14th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Ms. Pinyard, will you please call the roll?
Chair Ron Heberline.
Here.
Cameron Mesba. Jennifer Willard.
Here.
Olive Gallagher.
Here.
Brianna Tocinski.
Here.
Erin Woods.
Here.
Andrew Carr.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, this is the time that citizens have the opportunity to address the Planning Commission regarding any item that is not already scheduled for a formal public hearing tonight. Therefore, if any member of the audience either here in City Hall or via Zoom would like to speak about any work session, item, or any other matter of concern, please raise your hand or send a message to the recorder using the Zoom chat function so that we may hear from you now. Seeing that there are none, we will move on to the consideration of the July 13th and August 10th Planning Commission meeting minutes. The July 13th, 2022 and August 10th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting minutes are being considered as previously distributed. Are there any corrections to the minutes? All right, hearing no corrections, the minutes are approved as distributed. Commissioner Mesba, did you have any corrections to the minutes?
A couple of knots were missing, but I can pass that to later on.
Okay.
It's minor.
Okay, so I will say, are we?
We can come back to that later.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry about my turn.
That's okay. All right, moving on to the work session, looks like first up on the work session agenda is the airport good neighbor policies. Ms. Bateshell, would you like to lead us off?
Yes, thank you Chair Heberline and Commissioners. My name is Miranda Bateshell, Planning Director for the City of Wilsonville. Tonight, we have a work session on the airport good neighbor policies. Just as a reminder, I want to just go over a couple of things and then I'll introduce the team that's here with me tonight. So, just to remind you, the purpose of this project is that the City of Wilsonville has an interest in airport resource, the French Prairie District that's south of the Willamette River, and potential growth that may happen at the airport or adjacent to it. In order for us to be a voice at the table as an affected jurisdiction in any planning or discussions around growth that may happen down there, we need adopted policies that really help provide city staff and other leaders on how to give direction when we are at the table in terms of our interests and our position. So, the work of this project is really to develop those in our policies, but also to align that with the role of our comprehensive plan. So, we've had a lot of discussions through this process and one of the things that's been difficult to do as the project team has worked on this is to work with a lot of a larger encompassing kind of discussion with many community members and things that we may have heard from citizens, but how do we actually dial that into the city's role, particularly since the airport isn't within the city? And how do we match that with the role of the comprehensive plan and make sure that those things are aligning and that the policies that we're putting in place are both relevant to our interests and concerns, but are also written in a manner that aligns with the scope that's consistent with our role as a city and our role of the comprehensive plan? So, that's the draft policies you see in front of you tonight that we want to discuss with you. They take the form as an area of special concern in our comprehensive plan and that's how we've drafted them for you for your consideration tonight. We had a lot of discussion about this with the Planning Commission, with the City Council, and as the project team, and we did land on maintaining it as a area of special concern for a couple of reasons. Really, that component of the comprehensive plan is to outline areas where there are special considerations when development occurs in that area. So, that is the purpose statement in that section. And while there might be broader impacts in the city coming from activity at the airport or potential growth, the impact area might be different than the area that comes across in the area of special concern, and that's because the area map really depicts the development area where the policies will guide our review and participation. So, that is why we've aligned on that and we can talk more about that tonight, but that is kind of why you see the policy objectives coming through as an area of special concern as opposed to distributed throughout the comprehensive plan. It also gives us really clear direction as we're reviewing development in that area. It's all outlined in one section of the plan for us and we don't have to go on Easter egg hunt throughout the rest of the comprehensive plan. So, your task tonight, after we give a presentation, we want to hear from you, we want you to review the draft that is in preparation for a public hearing in November. That will be the next step, and we want to know, are we missing anything, first of all? And does this capture the city's scope of influence? That's kind of the second question. So, aligning with the comprehensive plan and our role, have we hit on those policy objectives in the right manner? So, with that, I'm going to hand the presentation over to Chris Green. He's Senior Planner from HHPR, who you have met a few times now, but the first time in person, so welcome, Chris. And he's going to remind you where we've been with this project, what we've heard, and outline the draft policies.
Thank you. I am going to share my screen. All right, so yes, thank you. So, I'm going to talk a little bit about interests and concerns that have come up in the planning process through different public participation and then feedback from the Planning Commission and City Council along the way. Take a look at those draft policy objectives, and then we'll talk a little bit about the area, the boundary that would define the area of special concern, and a proposal for that, and then discuss the draft policies. So, in terms of the process, there's been a variety of different approaches to both kind of the community at large and then stakeholders that have special interest in the airport or area around the airport. So, a lot of the stakeholder outreach was through interviews. We had an online survey earlier in the year and then online open houses during the summer to kind of go over early draft versions of some of the concept policies and kind of hear from people about potential positive and negative impacts of the airport. The issues and those interests and concerns that most came out of that process in a way that aligns, as Miranda said, with the comprehensive plan and sort of the city's role in the process were noise and pollution from flight patterns over Wilsonville. So, there's, you know, Charbonneau is the most geographically close to the airport, but what we did hear from Planning Commission and City Council and then during some of the surveys, you know, people could add information and what we heard was that it was really kind of hard to pin down like one part of Wilsonville, not just Charbonneau that sometimes is impacted by those flight patterns. Water pollution in and around the Willamette River was one, so if there is more development in that area, there was concern about what's there for infrastructure now and that being near the Willamette River and Willamette River watershed. The river, you know, has environmental, recreational, and then it's a source of water as well for the city, so definitely an interest there. Loss of high-quality farmland is one that's mostly related to, you know, potentially development around the airport or, you know, expansion of the airport beyond the boundaries into what's high-quality farmland on the French Prairie adjacent to it. Impacts on industrial and employment lands, so the City of Wilsonville has regionally significant industrial areas, significant industrial lands, and has done a lot of planning and public investment in terms of, you know, tax increment financing, infrastructure, things to build those employment lands within the city and kind of within the framework of the metro regional plan. And so, looking at if industrial development were sort of opened up in other areas outside of those metro boundaries, what effect that might have on the local economy and those lands that have been planned for. Maintaining effective surface transportation connections, so making sure that roadways in and around the airport still function, that again, development, for instance, either of the airport site or around it could, you know, impede traffic flow or impact the function of some of the roads that connect to Wilsonville. Also, the airport provides a lot of, you know, benefits to businesses and individuals in Wilsonville, and so if there's development in the intervening land that's preventing people from being able to get there, that kind of close access is lost. And then resiliency and capacity for emergency response, so looking at the airport's potential role in a, you know, Cascadia event or, you know, liflight operating from there, things like that, and making sure that it kind of ties into that surface transportation one, especially that this is something that remains kind of a priority at that airport and something that has access to Wilsonville. So, this is just kind of a summary of the actual draft objectives that you have, but number one really focuses on engaging as an affected jurisdiction, but also in those airport master planning processes, so plans for development or aviation operations at the airport, making sure that the city is involved in those conversations. Number two is similar in terms of, I'm sorry, number two is more focused on if there's changes to like aviation operations at the airport. Number one is more the master plan, which relates to development at the airport and what facilities will be located there. Number three is about minimizing noise impacts, so coordinating with agencies that either work on noise issues or there's, you know, organizations based at the airport that work with airport operators of planes at the airport and businesses to try to reduce those noise impacts. So, it's having that, doing that work to kind of try to mitigate noise impacts. Number four is development, both public and private and infrastructure projects, making sure that the city is involved in evaluating those and addressing them as they come up and making sure that they're consistent with things like the rural reserves that have been designated and the exclusive farm use areas in the French Prairie and making sure that it's consistent with those kind of regional and state policies. Making sure that there's concurrent infrastructure is number five, and that's kind of a balancing act because there's a lot of concern about making sure there's adequate infrastructure so that the development that does take place or is already there at the airport isn't kind of outpacing the capacity of water sewer, stormwater systems, things like that, but also not doing it in a way that facilitates like an urban intensity of growth in the French Prairie area. And then finally, maintaining the general aviation designation for the airport and those existing services. This is kind of recognizing some of the things that the airport does in terms of providing travel options for people, a place to, for general aviation, and then some of those emergency services and making sure that those are sort of the focus of the airport in the future, at least advocating for those to be the focus because of those benefits to the Wilsonville community. So, areas of special concern, this just kind of shows where they are existing now. As Miranda said, some of these are within the city and have special, you know, considerations just within design regulation or zoning. Some of them are outside of the city or were outside of the city, but were related to those impacts. So, there's A through N right now, so this would be potentially proposed area O. And so, the boundary that we're looking at here, you can see in blue, that's the boundary of the airport itself, and then orange is the areas where there's, they're considered airport development areas where there's through-the-fence access to the airport itself. And so, we're trying to capture with this boundary, and it's quite a bit smaller probably than what you saw in some earlier things, is just really focusing on where that development could take place, where those, you know, impacts are going to reach Wilsonville. So, this is basically, in most cases, one parcel out from where that airport area and through-the-fence area is. So, the discussion questions, but, you know, definitely want to hear about the policies in general, but is there any policy objectives or special considerations missing and do these reflect the city's scope of influence or are they aligned with what we can do through comprehensive plan policies and what best fits that mechanism? So, with that, I would open it up for questions or comments. I've got a zoomed-in map, if that helps, on that boundary.
Great, thank you.
Can I have a question?
Commissioner Mesba, go ahead.
Can you expound on how this is going to be enforced by the city? So, it's going to be in the comprehensive plan, but that area is not in the city, so what happens?
Yeah, so the idea is when the city is involved in, you know, regional conversations and is an affected, it kind of asserts the city as an affected jurisdiction, this would be what issues the city wants to, it kind of gives the city a starting point for those conversations and issues that have been identified and objectives that have been identified so that when the city goes into those conversations, there's something to point to that's adopted policy, but it doesn't like enforce things outside of the city's boundary.
So, how does it work in actuality?
I feel like we both have things to add. Would you like me to start? Well, I think we have probably two different perspectives on things to add, but I would say an additional layer is that as part of our AGMA, or Urban Growth Management Area Plan Agreement with the county, many years ago, we established a shared area of interest and this is one of them. So, our boundary includes the airport and this area of the county. It actually expands beyond area O, and anytime a development application comes forth in that area, we are required to be notified per that agreement. So, we do have an opportunity to review development that's proposed adjacent to or in the surrounding area of the airport, whether it's airport-related or not. And so, one way that we're able to, at least it triggers the review of development proposals, and then as we review those development proposals in area O, we would look to the policy objectives in area O to help guide us in terms of our concerns and interests of the city and our standing in reviewing those applications. So, reviewing for things like rural development, consistency with regional and state policies, EFU land, how development should occur in EFU land, and provide public comment consistent with that, and things like adequate services. And we've done that on a number of applications to date in the county. And then the, having those adopted policies in our comprehensive plan gives us a little bit more standing when we're in being, when those comments are being reviewed by the deciding body and/or any appeals body. So, that's one way in which, I don't know that it's actually enforcing. We don't necessarily have control over that land. We can't control exactly what happens there, but it provides us with that information in terms of how we should review, how we should comment, and kind of how those comments may be treated.
So, you have comment with standing, essentially, legally speaking? So, you have comment with standing, essentially, legally speaking?
Yes, and another component of this is that state agencies have state agency coordination programs, and Oregon Department of Aviation is one of those that has that. And when you're in affected jurisdiction, there are requirements that they have to meet in not only providing notice, but coordinating if there's conflicts that the affected jurisdiction notes. And what they really do look at is what does your comprehensive plan say? So, right now, it's silent for us, and so, this is a way for us to be clear in what our objectives are and where there may be conflict, what we can point to, to say this is why there's conflict.
So, that answers partly, I think, my second question was going to be, are we going to, this is fine for the airport. Are we going to have a special area for the area between the airport and the, and the city boundary? Because, so what happens if the golf course decides to develop a hotel? You would still have standing because of that kind of thing with the county that you're talking about, but it's not now in an area of concern or a special area? You know, I'm kind of reflecting back on our conversation, the last time we talked about what the area of impact should be. And that area was covered because we were talking about, okay, so what happens if there's growth proposals, not as part of the airport, but as a peripheral kind of thing to the airport, like a convention center? That kind of a thing, see?
Yeah, I, sorry. I, to me, that would be outside the scope of this project because this project is really looking at airport good neighbor policies and came about in terms of the concerns of our potential role in the airport planning master, planning process, right? So, making sure we have a voice at the table in that master planning and that we're essentially, that we are an affected jurisdiction, someone who's a part of that conversation. If we're concerned about rural development in general, that to me would be something else we could have a conversation about in terms of illegal urbanization of rural land, right? At this point, I feel like there would be multiple other enforcement layers that don't need the city to necessarily be a body to that because it would be private development at an urbanized level that would not be allowed by the county, by the state. If we were to see that that is something that might be elevating as a concern and we don't think that other bodies might be enforcing it to the degree that we have a concern over, that could be a question that we address and discuss at that later point in time or under a different project, is do we want to have another area that addresses private development in French Prairie as a whole?
And that was really the context. I know this is particular to the airport.
Right.
But a really high functioning airport with a lot of business coming and going begs for a convention center right next to it. And that's, you know, big bucks. So, you know, it's, I, in my kind of long range view of regional development, that's not that far fetched. So, we'll deal with it as it comes, is what I'm hearing. That's good.
Commissioner Carr, or number four?
Or number four. Thank you. Is this a document then that will be shared with the Airport Commission and Marion County? Or is this like an internal document for us in the event that we're notified?
Well, this language would be adopted into our comprehensive plan, and so, that's a public document. It's something that we can share. I think we, I don't know if there would be a reason to share it immediately. It's a question I actually have for legal that I need to talk about in terms of notification for this project anyway, and what our legal notice requirements are. So, it's possible they would be on that list and be provided a copy at that point in time. If it were, if we were to be providing public comment on a development or through the planning process, we would likely share with them what our position is and the foundation for that being the comprehensive plan.
So, we're adding a position where we haven't had one in the past?
We haven't had one formulated in the policies in our comprehensive plan.
I would imagine that since we are adopting a policy that impacts somebody, we need to notify them. Just a guess, I'm not a lawyer.
They have to notify us they plan to do development in this area.
True, but we are now taking this action that is going to impact their rights, rights.
We have to tell them that they have to tell us, or they don't know to tell us.
They already know to tell us, they just don't know that we have an opinion yet. Now, we have an opinion that we can reliably fall back upon.
Yes, I like that plan. Commissioner Willard?
No, I don't think I have any feedback on this.
Commissioner Gallagher?
Where does the issue of flight patterns and safety come into the conversation? Is it an issue?
Yes, so, there is, it is pretty limited in terms of like what a city can do directly. So, one of the objectives does talk about coordinating with agencies that enforce some of those rules about noise and, and safety. And there's, the federal regulations have a Part 150, which addresses, you know, federally what can happen around airports in terms of noise. And then, there's a type of study that could be done. It's only been done once in Oregon for PDX, but, you know, it was mentioned in that, mentioned in that objective. But, yeah, so I guess it's, it's mentioned to the extent that it can be by the city there where it kind of makes sense for the city and its comprehensive plan to be talking about that. But there, at the federal and state level, a lot of, that's where a lot of the regulation happens in terms of that.
I mean, I can already hear the community out there in an uproar, you know, way down the road. So, it just seems to me it's something that better to get it in the beginning rather than at the end. Thank you.
Absolutely. Commissioner Woods?
Yeah, just, just to tag on to what Commissioner Gallagher said, my question is around the, not only the noise abatement piece, but who would pay for that study?
It's, there's federal grants, when those do get done, it's federally funded. So, it'd be a matter of, you know, convincing state or federal, probably federal government to, you know, fund that type of study. But they're, yeah, grant funded by the FAA.
Okay. I like your choice of word of convince. So, I don't know what that means, but maybe you can just elaborate just a little bit on that in convincing?
Well, I mean, they have grant cycles that come up from time to time, and so, it'd be a matter of like advocating for that type of study to be done for the Aurora State Airport. But, you know, those programs change each cycle and what the criteria is for awarding the funds and things like that. So, I think just the, the objective was kind of written to be flexible, to say, hey, that's an opportunity that may be out there that could be something to, to get engaged with if it's out there. But it's not like there's currently, you know, money just available for it. It's a, it's a cyclical thing that the federal government funds.
Sounds like a cue to me.
One last question. There's draft all over this document, so when would, or what would cause this to go from draft to it being finalized?
So, this is the final draft that we intend to bring in front of you in, based on feedback that could change things. But the intent is to have a public hearing on this at your November meeting.
Thank you.
Commissioner Chazinsky?
All of my questions have been addressed and everything looks good to me, so, thanks.
All right. I have some, shocker. So, mine is, is more related to the language specifically. I, I think overall, I'm in favor of the general objectives. The potential impacts, there were a couple of them that I scratched my head with a little bit in terms of, you know, the negative impacts to development of industrial land in Wilsonville. And I was trying to understand what the connection would actually be between potential development around the airport and that harming Wilsonville, Wilsonville's development of industrial land. Are we expecting that there are companies that we would, that the airport would be poaching from our industrial land? I'm trying to understand the tie-in between those two.
Sure. So, within Wilsonville and Metro, the standards that have been adopted for like industrial development require certain levels of infrastructure, you know, zoning that, you know, has standards for design and things like that. And we don't know how that would necessarily play out in a hypothetical, you know, industrial area next to the airport. But, you know, right now, there isn't, say, like the sewer system out there, for instance. And so, there's a, you know, to give you an example of like companies being poached, well, if there's a certain cost to developing within an already urbanized area that's providing the services that are supposed to be there versus something that's close to an airport but doesn't really have that infrastructure in place, it could be like a lower cost option. But then, the cost would be in those, you know, impacts to the environment around it, including Wilsonville.
Okay. And, and that would be a concern if development happened in Aurora or Butteville or any other areas around Wilsonville as well? So, it's not just a airport specific concern, this is a potential concern?
Sure, yeah. I would say that the one thing that'd be like in Aurora, you know, it is a city, so they've got municipal services already and, and zoning that's pretty specific to that type of development or would. But, you know, the area around the airport isn't really, it's not a municipality or anything like that.
Okay. And then, on the resiliency one, how would an increase in runway length or any other practical change in the configuration of the airport impact its function in emergency response?
It might not, but I think it's, the idea is that it's that close access to Wilsonville and that it's, that's sort of the emphasis is providing those general aviation services versus becoming a different type of airport essentially, prioritizing different types of air traffic. That's kind of what is the hypothetical here.
As if we were assuming that it would become a regional or international airport or something like that? I'm, I'm, I'm really struggling with this one because a longer airport would only allow for a larger, potentially larger airplane to land, which would aid in disaster response, not make it worse.
I don't know if the specific, you know, scenario is just necessarily a longer runway. It's, it's more generally changes to operations. It's anything that could come up in the airport planning process that would impact that, not just a longer runway.
Hi, Brad Kilby with HHR, and I'm, I just wanted to chime in on that because I, I kind of think, I hear what you're saying, but we're not putting this objective necessarily forward to stop them from building a longer runway. We're trying to highlight the considerations that Wilsonville would like the airport to consider in any discussions about how they continue to grow. And I think this specific objective recognizes that the airport provides a benefit to the community and probably the region at large for having a runway that's available or even, I mean, most of that, I think helipads and things are probably more relevant in that, at that airport currently. And to, just to your, to your point, I mean, I think that it's not an international airport today, it may not be, but I, I just heard today, we, I was at a tournament and I heard that they were talking about reclassifying the Hillsborough Airport as a new type of airport because of the activity and size that it has. I don't think that you would see that in Aurora at any specific time in the near future because it's a lot of cost to bring in the urban services for water sewer that need to be put there before you could consider altering it. But it's just, again, just an objective that says, this is one of the concerns, this is why we have the concern. I don't know if that answers your question, but it's not specifically to stop the airport from building a longer runway.
Yeah, and I, I understand that. I'm just, I'm struggling with how, finding a conceivable scenario that would result in a negative impact to emergency operations, that's what I'm struggling with. And, and the extended runway is an example and, and is the most prominent example that's out there.
Currently, under discussion, sure.
But even if it changed designation, how would that impact the ability for it to serve as a disaster relief airport? It wouldn't.
No, it doesn't.
And, and so, that's where I'm, I'm struggling with how that is an actual concern that we should be putting in our comp plan.
Yeah, I don't think it's necessarily meant to anticipate a specific change as much as this is a benefit that we want to retain. And, you know, it's, it's probably, you know, not one where we could draw a direct line and say like, hey, if the runway's extended, this would be bad for emergency services because as you're saying, it wouldn't. But if there was something that happened in the future, this at least kind of records the community's interest in having those things based there.
Yeah, I, I hear you. I'm just, if we don't have a plausible scenario, then how can we have a concern?
I'll, I'll give you, I'll give you one. So, this special area is not just the airport, it's beyond the airport, it's the area around the airport. So, if there's development that goes on in there that impacts the airport's ability to deliver those emergency services, that's a concern to us. Because the roadway is rural, the infrastructure's rural. So, if they continue to develop around the airport to a point where they're straining that infrastructure and makes it less likely that, that the airport can provide those emergency services, that's our concern.
So, then I think, I, that makes sense. And I think if we could reword the, the draft language to reflect that concept, that it's a concern more about the infrastructure around the airport than it is the airport itself, I, I think I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
So, Chair Huberline, I would be interested in whether the rewriting should be to the final bullet in the, on page two, which would be the, I guess, the issues or the, the potential impacts.
Yeah.
Or whether you're looking at Policy Objective Six, because I think Policy Objective Six gets at what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Which is an interrelated policy objective.
It's the potential impacts that I had the issue with, the verbiage there, not Six. I was okay with Six. It was just the preamble that, that I was concerned about.
Mr. Chair, can we have a little bit more conversation on that?
Sure.
I think limiting the concern to development around the airport is in itself too limiting. I hear this objective being, just watch out that this airport is a resource for emergency delivery. And whatever you're doing, just have that as one of the checkboxes that says, are we maintaining that function? That's all we're saying. It doesn't need to be a specific scenario. It's just one of the issues of interest to the city. Now, I agree that development around and, and, you know, clogging this, the roadways and so forth would be one scenario. But I think if we are only focusing on that, there may be other stuff that we would be missing. I don't know what, but the, the whole idea is that this is an open-ended, so whatever is being done, this is one of the boxes that being done, this is one of the boxes that is in their list of things to watch for, just like a lot of other stuff that we have, that we have a checklist. Not all of them are necessarily meaningful in every case. It's there because we want to make sure we cover that base. That's how I read it and I'm comfortable with that. And I think that what we heard was an affirmation that that is the intent of this. It's not going to be, in other words, I'm not seeing it as an impediment for the airport to do what it's been doing. It's functioning as an airport and it is a resource. It's going to continue to be a resource. It's just, keep this in mind. I don't know why that would be a, you think it would irk somebody or, you know?
I just think it's important that if we have specific concerns, we need to state them. And these are potential impacts. But if we can't come up with a conceivable potential impact that makes sense, then I struggle with the merits of having it in there. That's, that's my concern.
Okay.
So the second sentence of that last bullet, changes to the configuration of the airport, type of operations housed there, or development-related impacts to surface transportation connections between Wilsonville and Area O. And we say here would diminish the overall benefits provided by the airport. It sounds like could diminish those is the most reasonable.
Probably more appropriate, yeah.
But also what I'm hearing the conversation say is instead of changes to the configuration of the airport, it's changes to the configuration of the area of concern. It's anything in the area of concern, not just, not exclusive to the airport.
Yeah.
Right, those, yeah, development-related impacts. And it says surface transportation, but if there were other development-related impacts like, you know, impacts to air navigation from that development.
FAA won't let that happen.
Right. I mean, that's, yeah, it's already covered by FAA, but...
But do we even need that second paragraph? I think the first paragraph gets Commissioner Mespa's point of, we just want to make sure that we're protecting the integrity of the emergency services. There could be things right now that we don't know will impact that. Do we want to hamstring ourselves by just putting in that second paragraph or second sentence? The first one seems to cover, we need to maintain emergency services. Could I just add something? I want to remind you that this is in your comprehensive plan, so it's not a regulatory document. It's a framework document, so it acts as a foundation that your regulations are built on. To Miranda's point earlier today, you cannot regulate what goes on at the airport. It's an entirely different jurisdiction. But the whole intent of this whole process when we started out was to not only show that there are impacts from airport operations on the citizens of Wilsonville, but to also show that there are benefits to the citizens of Wilsonville from activities at the airport and just for the fact that the airport's there. So I think that we don't want to think of these policy objectives as regulatory statements because they're not. They are just, hey, these are the things that we've been brought, made aware of through the course of this planning evolution, and this is how we intend to memorialize them within our comprehensive plan so that, you know, when Miranda and Dan are gone, like 10 years down the road, and the airport decides that they're going to go international or try something, you know, like a big expansion, you have this document to remind you of why you had this discussion in the first place.
It seems to me that it does another thing. In our earlier conversation, we talked about the benefits of the airport. And one of, this is one of the benefits. If I see this and I'm the airport, I would approach the city and say, let's collaborate. We are benefiting you. You want this benefit? Let's collaborate. That is why I like that checkbox.
Let's see, okay. Objectives. So objective number three, very technical thing, my apologies. Instead of FAR Part 150, it should be 14 capital C, capital F, capital R, space, Part 150, because it's Title 14 of the Code of Federal Regulations, Part 150, and there's other Part 150s throughout the Code of Federal Regulations. So, thank you. If we can update that to be clear, that would be great. Objective number four, we reference Clackamas County policies, but if the airport is in Marion County, why would we reference Clackamas County policies?
It's potentially part of the area that would be impacted. So the area of special concern is what we'd be like looking at to review, but those impacts are related to the rural reserves that Clackamas County designated in between Wilsonville and the airport.
But that's outside of Area O.
Right. Right.
So this is a technical reference to the rural reserves, and rural reserves do not exist in Marion County. So it's reflective of our desire to protect rural reserves, which are agreed upon by the region and Clackamas County. We can make that policy more clear to apply to EFU in Marion County and rural reserves in Clackamas County. I capture both if you would like that.
Great. Yep, that works. And then the last question I had, so can you explain why the area of special concern would be larger than the airport perimeter and the through-the-fence area? Because that's, that's the area of development that would occur at the airport. Anything else outside of that is something that could happen regardless of whether there was an airport there or not. So I'm trying to understand. So Highway 551 on the west side, for example, what's the likelihood that an airport-related development is going to develop across the highway? And if so, if we don't think there's a high probability, why do we put that inside the area of special concern?
I don't necessarily think we imagine that there's not a, some probability or some possibility of that happening. If there was, you know, an expansion of the area of the airport, then, you know, that development area potentially expands outward as well.
So we think that there's going to be a major realignment of a highway to support an expansion of the airport without us knowing well in advance?
Well, it's not, these aren't necessarily trying to anticipate, like, specific events happening that would lead to development in those areas. It's saying like, this is a, this is an area around the airport. It may not be, you know, a through-the-fence type thing, but if there was, say, industrial development located one parcel away from the through-the-fence proximity to the airport might be the reason for that happening.
Okay. Good enough for me. Anything else? Any other questions for, for us?
I don't think so. We've got, we've got good feedback to make a few adjustments here and have a draft we can bring to you for, for hearing.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Aren't we going to the city council, too?
Oh.
Yeah, we have a work session with the city council on Monday as well to go over these draft policies and get their input. And so the collective input we receive will refine what comes in front of you in November.
Great. Thank you. Okay, next work session item up on the list is the wastewater treatment master plan.
You postpone the minutes.
Hello, Planning Commission, can you hear me okay?
I was going to say, it's your per-
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. I'm going to kind of share my screen of a little PowerPoint. Also have Dave Price again from Corolla Engineers, and he'll probably do most of the talking, but I'm going to just kind of give a little overview of where we are in this process. So we did, you know, present to you in July, and we discussed the various growth projections that were in the master plan and the numbers, you know, that we had presented were based on the lower growth projections from Metro and, you know, discussions with the Planning Commission as well as, you know, internal discussions with management. We went back and looked at basically the higher growth curve, which was just under 3% a year annual growth. And so we've basically rerun the numbers for the modeling of the flows and loads at the plant as well as the impact on plant capacity and the capital investment that would be required to handle that level of growth. And it is a pretty substantial change from before. And so we have an updated project schedule and cost, estimated cost for these projects. And, you know, we're currently kind of trying to update all the other portions of the master plan documents that are impacted by these changes. And after we have our meeting with you tonight, we have another meeting, public open house online scheduled that's just been advertised on the city's website for any members of the general public that want to provide input. With that, I'm going to go ahead and start moving into the technical aspects of, you know, what we're seeing and let Dave take over.
Thanks, Mike. Good evening, everybody. As Mike said, we were in front of you all in July, and we're giving you, giving you an update of where we were at with the master plan for the wastewater treatment plant. And we have completed our evaluation of the unit processes out there and the equipment using those higher growth projections that Mike mentioned. This is a slide that is, if you recall, when we met in July, it's sort of similar to the one that we presented then. What you'll see here on this slide are design criteria flows and loads. You've got an existing column there which shows you what the plant is currently receiving in terms of flows and loads, some average flows that are important to us when we're designing and planning. And then with that higher growth projection, flows and loads for 2045. And when we were here in July, I think the numbers in the column on the right probably were in the neighborhood of 30, 40, maybe 50% higher than the existing numbers. And what you'll see here now is that you've got numbers that are, you know, two times what your current flows and loads are. And I think that should make sense to everybody because those Metro numbers that we were basing our presentation on previously, we're getting, the population numbers really were quite lower than the numbers that we're using now. And these numbers are population figures that are consistent with the numbers that were used in the collection system master plan and should be consistent with your comprehensive planning documents. Let me go to the next slide, Mike. The, obviously, the increase in the flows and loads over a shorter period of time is also going to drive improvements at the treatment plant. I'm not going to, we're not going to revisit some of the improvements that we discussed when we were here in July, but some critical ones and some new ones that are flagged in our analysis and some recommendations that we've made based on that are shown here and on the next few slides. The key thing here, and we'll start at the top with secondary treatment, is when I was here, when we were here talking with you in July, we mentioned that, hey, you know, in the near term, there's going to need to be some additional capacity at the plant provided for the secondary process. We were talking about a new aeration basin and some new blowers. I think the numbers, the dates for that really were more like 2036, 2038. You'll notice on this slide and on some of the subsequent slides that those numbers, those dates now have accelerated in order to get these improvements in place prior to the growth impacting the plant. And so now you've got projects that would need to be started very soon so that the improvements could be in place by 2026. In addition to those improvements that we talked about before, the secondary process also is going to need some additional capacity by 2045. If the urban growth boundary builds out by 2045, which is essentially the growth assumption that we have made, then there's going to need to be more capacity provided to remove the OD and suspended solids and immediate permit requirements for discharge to the Willamette River. And we may have discussed this in July, but certainly the documents that we prepared to date identified an alternative to the conventional process that you have out there for treating wastewater and an intensification process, which we're showing here as a membrane bioreactor process. Essentially, this is a, I'll call it an ultrafiltration. It's a membrane treatment process. It's not what you're currently doing. You're treating your wastewater and then you're filtering it with cloth filters. But this is an important element of the plan going forward and a significant element of the capital improvement plan. You also notice that there are a number of dates on that row in the table there. That's because we recognize that this is also going to be a significant investment that's likely going to need to be phased, and that's what this is acknowledging here. And then finally, on this table, as you get further out into the planning period, there certainly is going to need to be some additional capacity to ensure that effluent is not impacting the temperature in the river adversely. And so we're identifying the need for an additional cooling tower. That's an element that has been planned for previously, and it's simply just acknowledging that that's likely to happen during the planning period. Next slide, Mike. So as we identified our capacity limitations, since we're evaluating this higher growth projection, as I mentioned, we identified the secondary process, the additional aeration basin, which we believe is also provide some additional resiliency and flexibility in the future down the road. And we could get into that tonight or at some future date if necessary. But certainly, the MBR, the membrane bioreactor process elements are going to be key, we think, to making sure that you guys have capacity and that the city is going to maintain compliance with the permit requirements. We also were concerned at these higher growth rates with the flood, the solids management and the solids treatment and handling processes out there. So we took a harder look at the thickening and de-watering equipment and processes at the plant. And there are certainly, there certainly is the potential that there are some impacts to those processes more, more on the operations and maintenance side, most likely. We also have some aging equipment out there in terms of the gravity belt thickeners and in fact, the centrifuges, which are not all that old. By the time we get to 2045, those will have been in service for quite a while. So the CIP is acknowledging that those pieces of equipment are going to need to be replaced. I'll circle back to that comment that I made about operations and maintenance and just simply say that the solids equipment, the solids processes appears, they appear to have capacity to serve the city's needs through 2045 at this projection. But there will be the need for more operator attention. There will need to be more operational hours, kind of more or less moving in a direction, ultimately, I guess I would, I would say- ultimately, I guess I would, I would say of almost continuous operation of that process, which is not an uncommon, an uncommon operational configuration or situation. It's just simply something as the city grows into this, there's going to need to be more effort there. And then we're also acknowledging the, some of the other items that we had discussed previously there at the bottom of the slide. So let's go ahead and move on to the next slide, Mike. So this figure illustrates the current thinking on the site layout and the site plan to accommodate these improvements. We've got items that are new, we'll call them capacity upgrades in blue, the new aeration basin and blowers previously are shown on here, but also the MBR facility. You'll see that smack in the middle of the figure, that large blue figure, or that large blue shape. And then the membranes are pieces of equipment that are very, they're very efficient, they're very good at removing solids and producing a high quality effluent, but they need to be protected. So there's also a small rectangle there off to the left, which is the north side of the plant, where we're going to need to put in some finer screens in there to protect those membranes and increase the life of those membranes. Hard to see on this figure, but there's also an additional cooling tower there on the outside of the plant. And then, of course, we're showing additional improvements, improvements that we had talked about back in July, seismic improvements to some of the buildings and replacement of equipment, replacing the dryer improvements to the UV, backup UV system. There's also going to need to be some significant upgrades at some point to the electrical service, and we're also showing an additional emergency generator on this figure. So in addition to, you go to the next one, Mike. In addition to just more disruption and more, you know, more, more work happening within, you know, the planning period, it's going to happen on an accelerated basis if the growth projections hold out and the whole true. And you'll see work getting underway and in progress in earnest in 2025 on the new aeration basin and the blowers. That's an important improvement because when we build the membrane building, if you, if we look, look at the figure that was just up a second ago, that's going to require removing, demolishing and removing one of your secondary clarifiers. So adding that additional aeration basin provides some additional capacity for the operators, which should give them some flexibility to work through the 12 or 18 month construction period that's going to be required to get that first phase of the membrane bioreactor in place. In addition to that, you know, when we were here before, we talked about replacing the solids dryer. We had a, I believe, a 2029 or 2030 date on that. We've now pushed that out a little bit, and we've got a slide later that shows cash flow that probably speaks for itself. We're trying to make sure that we're adjusting and being flexible and providing the city as much flexibility as we can in managing these costs and phasing things. But you also see on the schedule that the MBR facility in place, work happening, design happening later in this decade in phase, that would be the phase one project, which would put most of the building infrastructure in place to house the equipment. And then there are three subsequent phases that occur on the, on the timeline there that can get you to the full capacity facility that we believe need for the 2045 growth projections. Want to go to the next one, Mike? So what all this means is when we were here in July, I think we had a total CIP number at the bottom of the table that was something in the neighborhood of $31 million. You'll notice this one is about three times that. And in my mind, that makes sense in terms of the increased capacity that we're now looking at with this higher growth scenario. And I'd be happy to, you know, talk, talk specifically about any of these elements in here if anybody has questions on that. But the key thing here is that there is going to be significant investment, it's going to be investment that's going to be needed to, it's going to need to initiate relatively soon. And if the growth holds out, that's what, that's what our numbers right now are telling us that we believe it's going to take to get to 2045. The next slide is a graphical representation of those numbers. And this is, you know, it's a good way to visualize what that dollars mean in terms of time in the schedule, but it's also a tool for the city to be able to assess, you know, how, how to manage, how you might be able to manage that cash flow in a reasonable, So as Mike mentioned, we've got the open house in a couple of weeks. We've got more hearings. I'll let Mike, I'll let you take over here, Mike, and I'll be happy to converse with everybody, answer questions as appropriate.
Well, maybe, maybe before we even talk about next steps, we should just stop for questions because we threw a lot of stuff out here. So is there anything particular that we want to focus, provide more detail on?
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Woods.
Yeah, you know, this is, when we look at this draft cash flow, I mean, it's pretty evident that the, what is it, the membrane bioreactor is the biggest outlay of cash in years and starting in 2028, I believe it is. So my, my question is, how are we planning for this? Are we doing any pro-planning of the funds that we're going to need for that? Because that's a very big outlay there.
Yes, it is. And that is one of the items that's actually on our next steps, and we may have mentioned it before, but within this current budget year, we have a rate and SDC study that would be the very next thing we do, you know, upon completion of this plan. And that's to look at the details of how to, how to fund these improvements through a combination of, you know, rate adjustments and SDCs and maybe other, other mechanisms available.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Carr.
Thank you. So I'm assuming we have some monies in reserve already. So at what point does the rate and SDC changes, SDC changes, need to happen for the monies to be there for this 2028, 2029, 2030 expenditure?
Well, I think, you know, that's, that's one of the questions the, the study would have to be able to answer, is the, you know, the timing of it. And I suspect there's going to be, you know, rate increases and SDC increases that would be phased in, you know, over time. But that's, yeah, that's going to have to be fleshed out in that study, you know, accommodating the growth that we're expecting and, you know, how those rates will have to be adjusted as growth occurs in order to provide the necessary funding. But I would suspect that once the study is completed and then, you know, the, whatever public involvement process needs to happen with that, once it's adopted, it's probably going to have to begin right away to start making those adjustments.
So how do we explain, how do we explain rate changes to existing customers when it's expansion that we're dealing with?
Well, that's, I mean, that's ultimately a council decision. And yes, the majority of this investment is driven by capacity needs. You know, there is, there's components of this that are replacing old equipment, so it's not entirely growth driven. But yes, I would anticipate that the, the impact on SDCs is going to be far greater than the impact on rates.
Thank you. Commissioner Mesbott, did you have something?
Yeah. I think you touched on this, but these improvements are going to be triggered by threshold population growths, right? As you see growth getting to a certain place, then a new unit gets triggered. And that's the flexibility you were talking about. Is that correct?
That's right.
That is correct. So this is not casting concrete. And the reason why I'm bringing that up is this. You know, I've in the past talked about the cost of growth. This is an interesting exercise because we are simulating a doubling of the size and the cost triples. And that, in my past experience, slows growth because some of the growth occurs because it's competitive price-wise, although we talk about affordability, it's still cheaper than Tuolatin or somewhere else. So people come here and you have a growth spurt. And then these costs catch up, and it's not any cheaper anymore. So it's cheaper to be closer to your work, so slows down the growth. And so that's the reason why I asked, are we, the schedule is not casting concrete. As we see growth, it triggers these decisions for these units to come in. However, having said all of this, I wish you had shown the curve of the population growth. In a previous life, I would have been in the position.
I referenced slide in here, this one here.
You got it.
So we're looking at this purple curve now.
You're being asked to go full screen. Can you do that?
Yes, let me find that button.
To the right. That one.
Experts in Zoom. So you're going with the, with the steep curve, right? So it's.
Yeah, so the numbers that are shown here on the left are for the orange curve, but the numbers that we presented in this, in these slides are based on the purple.
Correct.
Curve, which is the same growth rate that Dave mentioned was used in the collection system master plan from 2014, as well as the water treatment plant master plan, and I believe several other planning documents.
Correct. In a previous life again, I would have been in the position of reviewing this plan. And I can tell you that right offhand, I would say a community's comprehensive plan is their wish. It doesn't necessarily come true. And so I would like to see cost-effective analysis of some of this projection and growth and units, especially since by taking this population growth curve, we have managed to say we have no option but the reactor treatment, which is a more expensive treatment because we need to meet higher water quality standards. Understood all of that. But it is taking away a lot of choices that I think the city may be well to consider. Maybe the city decides it doesn't want to double in size ever because it doesn't want to deal with the higher water quality impacts on the receiving water. I've seen that now, we are dealing with a much bigger river. I've seen it in smaller receiving streams, cold water streams, where you really don't have the assimilative capacity to grow as big as you want to grow. So the reason why I'm bringing all of this up is these, to me, are necessary to explain to rate payers why we are planning what we are planning in a, in a comprehensive and understandable way. Otherwise, you know, the question comes up, am I paying for somebody else's growth or those kinds of things that are really divisive and not helpful to a sense of community? This is a community service, and we should be approaching it as a benefit for all and the environment that is receiving our waste, treated waste. So that's the comments I wanted to make.
And I think one clarifying question that I would have around this is, so this is a great chart, and I'm glad you brought it up. So the, what were the baseline population numbers used for the starting point? Is it 2021 or is it, or is it 2015 in terms of what the current analysis was for flow rates and, and all the details in some of the earlier slides?
Typically, and I could, I need to go back, I could go back and double check that, but that's usually a five or six years worth of data. And often what we'll do is we'll analyze what the, what the influencer flow meter and the data that the operators out at the plant actually are collecting when we're looking at existing. And then we're projecting out using unit factors, numbers that are, you know, conservative to a certain extent, and making sure that there is sufficient, you know, that that also provides for some flexibility in terms of how the facility is, is being planned. And if the numbers that we've used are too conservative and there isn't that much water being used, or isn't that much waste generated, if the growth doesn't occur as this prediction envisioned, then, then the plan needs to adjust to that. I don't know if I answered your question.
Yeah, I guess, I guess my question more specifically for, for this existing column, what year and what population was that based on? Is that 2021 or is it some year earlier than that?
No, you can consider that a 2021 number.
Okay, so we can.
Measured values, right? That's not estimates.
Yeah, that's great. And so, so the existing value is based on a population of approximately 27,000 people. And based on the magenta line, the projected 2045 population was about 52,000 people. So we are a little short of a doubling, but in terms of flows, you're showing slightly more than doubling. But it's not horribly off. And that's what I wanted to, to understand is, is whether or not it made sense that, that the flows made sense, and it looks like it does. So then it comes back down to that question of, do we really expect to be at that population level to drive all of the necessary infrastructure requirements that have been defined here?
Yeah, and I understand that for a collection system study, you want to use the planned population because you don't want pipes in the ground that live 50, 70 years to, to be undersized. But for the receiving end, a treatment plant, if you oversize it and don't use it, that's a waste of money.
Yeah, so I guess, you know, the question might be, you know, when, when we talked in July, it felt like it was too low. And, you know, talking now, I guess the question is, is it too high? And, and is there a middle ground that is more, a more realistic growth scenario? Or at least if, if that were to come to pass, would you do something differently from a planning perspective? Would the design of the system be different if you were expecting 40,000 people or 45,000 people instead of 52?
I think that, I think the answer to that, given the available, the spaces available at the existing treatment plant site, would be not necessarily. We would likely wind up with the same recommendation that we have here. In fact, I think when.
This might affect the timeline. It might get pushed. It might get pushed out into the future more, but in order to serve the ultimate build out, whether that happens in 2045 or later, we really, we don't have other like space to do something different.
Exactly, Mike. And we didn't go into detail tonight, and I don't know that we went into detail in July, but we did look at other options for providing capacity. There are other processes that are available to intensify secondary treatment. So we did look at some of those other processes and the conclusion was that the MBR is the direction that the city should go. Whether or not, you know, there've been several questions about whether or not that happens by 2040 or whatever our timeline currently says, or whether that happens in 2060 or, you know, we don't, nobody has any control over that necessarily. But what I hope that everybody is hearing is that this is, this is a plan that would be, we feel is going to provide you with a very robust facility that is going to have, you know, that you can feel confident is going to meet your requirements on the water quality side, but that we also have a plan here that is flexible to the degree with, to which we can make it flexible. And I think that there's probably additional flexibility. There are some additional variations on this if there were to be some different criteria applied, a different scenario that was applied. And those are things, and you know, we're talking about a 20 year, 23 year period. So there's always time to reconsider, but at this time, this is, this is what we're saying. And you can almost consider what we brought you in July and this particular scenario here, sort of bracketing kind of the range of options, I guess I would say.
Mr. Chairman.
And then I, I think I, you know, mentioned before, when we do the rate and SDC study, I'm sure one of the issues that will be looked at is how would the funding be impacted by changes in growth? So if, you know, if growth flows way down for some reason and, you know, we get to 2028 and we're not seeing the flows that we project, then yeah, we would likely, you know, push some of these projects out. But in order to serve this ultimate population within the UGB around Wilsonville, that with the limited site that we've got, I don't think what we build would change, just possibly when.
The other thing that's not in any of the scenarios here are any significant changes on the regulatory side. When we did our regulatory analysis, we identified a handful of issues. I think we may have talked about those at the last meeting. You're already cooling your F1 because of the concern about temperature impacts. There are, there are processes in place underway or pending to potentially look at other pollutants that may be regulated. What I think you wind up with, with this particular plan is a very firm basis upon which to build. And that's why we continue to push forward with that fourth aeration basin initially as opposed to going right to the membranes. Having that additional volume and that capacity in the plant is going to provide flexibility for the city in the future in being able to address potential future regulatory concerns. And I think another key thing that we may have failed to mention here is that when the membrane facility is in place, your secondary clarifiers that are, the two that are not demolish the build up facility and your filters would effectively become redundant facilities because the membrane bioreactor is going to produce F1. It's not going to be, it's not going to be necessary to run that through clarifiers. It's not going to be necessary to run that through filters because of the process of the liquid separation that occurs with the membrane. In the long run, you know, we've gone to the membrane facility because of the fact that there are slight constraints at the treatment plant. But lo and behold, when the facility is in place, you do wind up freeing some space up as a result of that. So I guess my thought on that or my, my, my point there is that that's going to afford the city some flexibility in the future if there is something that comes down the road on the regulatory side in addition to the growth.
I want to make sure my comments aren't misinterpreted. The proposed plan is based on population that's currently baked into our plans. It's going to eventually happen. It may not happen by 2045, it may be 2065, but this is going to be necessary eventually. So so long as we're doing it based on need and pushing this out as, as population growth doesn't happen, I think this is a sound plan. I still think that we need to explain it very clearly so that it doesn't create an impression that, you know, this is cost for newcomers versus cost for what wasn't done before or any of that stuff. This is what is, we've planned as a community and envisioned as a community. Now, I don't know, I'm not sure that we ever look at the fiscal impacts of growth ahead of our planning. We talk about it and then, you know, we kind of, because it's a separate process, it doesn't get taken into account as we adopt new areas to grow into. It seems, at least not in the planning commission, maybe the council does. So if there is any way of doing this kind of thinking as we are adding areas ahead of time, instead of, you know, all of a sudden saying, whoa, this is what we've approved, so we need to approve this as well. I think that would be helpful as well in our overall process, but we need to explain this is all I am saying.
Yeah, absolutely. Commissioner Carr?
Yes, thank you. I think our original concern with following the orange line was the fact that we knew of future developments that were going to exceed the orange line. We're working on them right now, as a matter of fact. So, so if those developments come to fruition, the orange line is, we know is not usable. And then that becomes the problem of, you know, it's an essential service and it has to be in place. And even though we've got this timeline, it sounds like, and confirm this if you will, the project list won't change. It's the timing of the project list and of course representative cost. That's what's going to change. So if we take the, the chart that's on page three and where it says timeframe, if that just says potential timeframe based on growth, expected growth, then I think that paints it maybe a clearer picture. Timeframe, and I realize this is a plan and plans are plans. Plans are not budgets, plans are plans. Having something, making that timeframe seem a little more squishy because of the fact that the expenditures for many of these will not, are dependent upon seeing the growth that we're anticipating, expecting, that is potential. But yeah, I think, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, but that membrane phase is something that we're going to need regardless, just as our population grows. It's not something we can avoid by just keeping our population status quo. Not, that's our plan anyway. Is that a correct statement? These projects are kind of a requirement as we grow, just the timing of it's the part that's squishy and therefore the cost?
That's correct.
Right. So this is, this is assuming we reach build out around 2045. But yeah, whether that happens 10 years later, these facilities will still be needed, but just maybe not as soon.
So then maybe just a clarification would be estimated timeframe as well as estimated cost so that it is clear that it's not a hard date that these things are going to happen in 2023, 2025, 2028?
That's, that's true for the membranes, Mike, but there are some elements in there that are going to happen on probably a fairly certain timeframe.
Yeah, these, these first few projects on the list, I would say probably, yes, everything up to the membranes, we, even with the orange curve, we were doing an aeration basin fairly soon.
So do we have funds in place for those projects already or are we behind the eight ball? If you're saying it's 2023 and 2024, the money better already be there.
Yes, and these, these first few up before the aeration basin are not that substantial. So yes, I would say it's pretty safe to say we have the funding for these, these first few that are not necessarily even growth projects. The UV replacement, that's just a very old system that predates the last upgrade. Piscine improvements is also just trying to reinforce existing structures.
The new aeration basin is growth, more growth driven than current population. The replaced secondary clarifier, that's, that's maintenance, right? But then you start looking at all these new, 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 that's all growth driven.
Yes.
And I don't want to belabor the point, but I think what we're really trying to say is, is the majority of the estimated cost is growth related. And so if the majority of estimated cost is growth related and the timeline is not certain, it would be better to state an estimated timeframe instead of a timeframe, which leads people to think that it is certain that it's going to happen at that point.
No, that's correct. We can present that better and certainly, you know, in the document, we'll make that clear.
Okay.
Commissioner Carr used the technical word squishy. Usually we don't use squishy because that encourages politicians to kick the can down the road. Commensurate to population threshold numbers is what I would encourage you to go with. And I would hope that you're able to show, at least within a range, population levels which would trigger an action so that it gives some guidance to decision makers. Otherwise, you know, it's, well, you know, it's squishy.
It's squishy.
So Commissioner Mesbott.
Yeah, that would be useful. Have a column in, in here that had like assumed population, yeah.
There's that and then the other thing I would remind everybody is there's a, there's a significant element of industrial use that is in the projections. So population can be a guide, but it's not 100%.
Or flow. Yeah, that's correct.
Depending on what happens between, you know, jobs to town and all that sort of thing.
Sure.
Commissioner Woods, Tuzinski, Gallagher, any additional comments?
I do.
Okay, go for it.
First, let me just say I certainly support taking care of our infrastructure. All you have to do is look at Jackson, Mississippi to know we don't want to be there. So forgive if this is naive, but I have to tell you that when I saw the projection of growth, I reacted to it. Do we really want it? Are we really planning on doubling the population of Wilsonville? I mean, it's just a simple question, but I think it's a question of is that what we want? Is that what this is all about or is that what we're concerned about?
I'm hearing we done did it.
Huh?
I'm going to.
Really squishy.
I'm going to change the screen share for just a second and maybe this map will be a little helpful, but this is, this is what we're talking about. Everything inside the orange line, so it's mostly already in the city, but there's, and there's areas outside the city, but for the most part, it's, you know, most of the service area is already within city limits. So it's, it's just assuming, I mean, looking at available land and ultimately, yes, if it develops as is currently planned, you know, this is what will be needed.
Okay, so this.
If there's a decision to change that through zoning changes or comp plan changes, then yes, that changes or could change what's going to be needed.
But where's 50,000 people coming from? We know Frog Pond is going to be, what, six? Whether their development within the city is going to give us 17,000 more people?
Assuming this, assuming this boundary, I think that's the challenge at this point is if, if the study area is based on this boundary and that's it, then we should base our population estimates on that boundary as well. And so either the boundary is off or the population estimate's off, one of the two.
And the density that will permit.
Yes, we are also densifying downtown.
But not.
All the apartments we talked about.
Not 15,000 people.
No, but there's numbers, they add up.
But these, again, these numbers are consistent with the, the planning we've done for the sewer system as well as the water treatment plant that's currently under expansion. It's, so these numbers are not really a departure from other projections that we've been using to plan for our infrastructure.
I guess at the end of the day, as long as it's time bound or population based or use based, then it's okay. This is, this is the plan for infrastructure if and when we need it. And, and I guess at that point is we, I can be comfortable with that idea regardless of what the boundary says. If we get to that point eventually, we'll need it.
Okay.
Well, I would like to also underscore Commissioner Gallagher's statement. If you lowball it and blow your water quality standards because you're now discharging raw sewers or polluted wastewater or whatever, then there's hell to pay. It's, it will penalize the city and potentially put a total stop to any new growth and all kinds of stuff like that until it's addressed.
It'll cost twice as much.
And you don't want to be in that position. So that's why you do planning, you know, ahead of time.
Okay. Given where we are on time, I'm going to say that we're probably good unless there's somebody that's got some violent disagreement on another comment. All right. Thank you. I appreciate the presentation and look forward to seeing you again soon.
All right, thank you.
All right. Time check, we're at 7:40. Does anybody need a break before we move into Mr. Polly's Fun and Excitement?
Yes, please.
Okay. Let's take a five minute break, 7:45. That's okay, we can wait.
I have to take a couple, sorry. I apologize.
You have to hit, hit update now, right?
For those listening in, we are on a short delay. Thank you for your patience, please stand by.
This is the captain speaking. You're now the...
Great, thank you. All right, moving on to the, uh, third and final work session item for tonight, Frog Pond East and South Master Plan with, uh, Mr. Polly. Take it away.
Guys have all your questions answered already, right?
Yes.
Well, uh, we're here again for our work session on, on Frog Pond East and South, which is, uh, planning, which is something the Planning Commission has been working on for a while now, as has the community. We're on our eighth work section, session, and, uh, later tonight, we'll talk about what's left and kind of the plan from here. But, uh, tonight really, let me start by introducing who we have with us. Uh, we have Joe Dills from MIG, Andrew Parrish from MIG, Jenna Bogart from DKS and Associates, and Mike Carr from Murray Smith. Uh, Jenna, uh, Jenna's been working on the transportation and Mike has been working on the other infrastructure pieces. So what we will cover tonight in our work session is, first of all, infrastructure. Uh, that's not something we've talked, uh, back in June, we had an introduction to kind of existing conditions for the non-transportation pieces, but this is the first we've really talked about the transportation piece, uh, in much detail at all for this project. Uh, and then we'll follow up from our June, brief June discussion on water and sanitary sewer and what, what the plan is and what's going on with that for, for Frog Pond East and South. Uh, had some great questions, like you often do, on housing variety, and that's definitely an area that, uh, there'll be continued discussion on, so wanted to follow up on a couple specific questions, uh, from last, from the last work session there, and have any other housing variety discussion that the commission is wanting to have tonight, knowing that we'll still have more. And then looking forward and talking about the next steps and how we, how we get, what the finish line is looking like at this point. So with that, I will, uh, turn it over to the consultant team. Joe, I'm not sure if you wanted to say anything additional to introduce Jenna, uh, otherwise we can let Jenna start talking about, uh, well, I, I will add this, uh, a couple, a couple items, uh, that really kind of big picture, and this is reflecting both the memos, I got ahead of myself a little here. Uh, kind of why we're doing this portion of the master plan simply is there was preliminary, if you look back at the area plan from 2015, there was infrastructure work done there. Um, but that was preliminary, we didn't know everything we know now. So to kind of taking that building, using that as a foundation and building on that. And really the output is to come up with a list of projects, uh, that we're going to estimate the cost and put into a program to find a way to fund them, to make development happen out here and provide the foundation for development. There's also, you'll see, we're not really going to highlight or talk about it much tonight, but I just want to bring it to your attention because if we don't talk about it, it's like, what is that? Uh, there is, particularly it's pulled out, uh, in the water and sewer memo, uh, it's not included in the current draft of the transportation memo, but we're doing a sensitivity test for a hypothetical higher residential unit count. Uh, this gets a little wonky. Uh, this is during the state administrative rulemaking for implementation of House Bill 2001, simply put, they've come up with a variety of options essentially jurisdictions can take, uh, you know, door A, door B, uh, door C, door D, I don't know how many doors there are now, or might be here the next, uh, little bit. But one of those was to plan for 20 units per net acre. Uh, and so that was an interesting question that we put into scope. If we plan infrastructure for 20 units per net acre, how much more expensive would that be than planning infrastructure for what we're anticipating will be built during the initial build out? So, uh, outside of that explanation of why it's in there, we're not going to really dwell on that tonight, but just want to put that out there. So with that, we're ready for transportation, unless there's something else, uh, Joe wants to put on the table.
No, just a quick hello, Commissioner, and Jenna, go ahead and introduce yourself and take it away.
Thanks, Joe, yeah, thanks, Dan. Do you guys hear me all right? Good. So, yeah, good evening, Commissioners, my name is Jenna Bogart, and, um, I'm here, um, as the transportation engineering, um, consultant, uh, from DKS Associates. Um, I'm just here to present on the findings for transportation analysis, and, um, I thought I'd just start with, um, an overview of the process, um, of the transportation analysis, just to provide some context and background to, to the findings, um, which we'll go over in more detail in the next few slides. But we'll start off with just analyzing the existing conditions, collecting traffic count data, taking a look at existing vehicle operations, delay, level of service, taking a look at the pedestrian bike facilities and, and gaps and deficiencies in those facilities, um, and documenting those. Uh, for our future 2040 analysis, we utilize the Wilsonville travel demand model, which is really a sub-area cut and contains all the land use data consistent with the metro travel demand model. So really, we just take a cut of that model, uh, throughout the Wilsonville area, and pull the traffic data we need from that to run our, um, uh, traffic operations for 2040. And currently, that travel demand model for Wilsonville has land use data assumptions for Frog Pond, it has housing and jobs, uh, details in there. Um, and so that's what we use to, to evaluate a baseline condition. But when we took a closer look, those unit counts were not very consistent with, um, kind of the anticipated build condition, which I'll just clarify is not the sensitivity hypothetical scenario that Dan was referring to. This is a density that's lower than 20 units per acre, um, and it, I think resulted in about 1,800 units and 44,000 square feet of commercial space in the east and south neighborhoods. And so, um, the model, as it was, um, unadjusted, did not quite have, have the level of units, um, and housing and jobs in it, so we adjusted the model so it matched that unit count, those job counts. Um, and we ran a scenario that represented that anticipated build condition. And so we analyzed those two conditions, one kind of as that baseline and the other one as that anticipated build. Um, and that identified for us in our study area, any intersections that were failing to meet city level of service standards. Um, and then from there, we were able to identify projects that mitigate those vehicle deficiencies in the study area. And not only that, but also we took a look again at pet and bike facilities, safety needs in the area, and also created projects that, that met and addressed those needs, um, for those as well. And kind of the high-level takeaway I'll, I'll say about the project list for transportation is that, um, the list of recommended projects from this analysis is really not that different from the previous work that we've done for the Frog Pond area plan or the west plan. Um, the future traffic volumes that we saw and that anticipated build conditions were really generally consistent with what we had done previously for Frog Pond. Next slide. Map is showing the, uh, study intersections. Um, you'll see that the includes the two Wilsonville, um, I-5 interchanges, so Wilsonville Road to the south and the Elixon interchange to the north. Um, it also includes the Stafford Road and 65th intersection, which is not a city intersection, it's actually under county, Quackamas County jurisdiction. Um, I just wanted to point out that it does fail to meet, um, standards, county standards today under today's traffic volumes. Um, it's, as you probably know, um, there's decent delays and queues out there today, and so we included it because it is a regional gateway between Wilsonville and, and neighboring cities. And over the last few years, these city staff and county staff have kind of kept an eye on it and have had lots of discussions about the issues there today. And so actually, as part of the Beckman Road project, there's, um, a plan to install an interim traffic signal there, um, to manage anticipated traffic increase due to the Beckman Road closure. So there's, there's already been some interim solutions to, to mitigate the issues that we're seeing there today. Um, I'll also point out that the gateway intersections are there along Stafford Road, Colley, Colley Road, and the intersection of Frog Pond Lane and the intersection of Brisbane Street. And then for the south neighborhood, you have the gateway intersection at Advance Road and 60th Avenue. Um, and so under those 2040 baseline and anticipated build scenarios, we also assume that the city's high priority TSP projects were, um, built, and so those are listed on the map there. Um, those projects include, um, intersection improvements at that Stafford Road, 65th, Elixon intersection area. Um, the county's plans there are to combine those intersections into a four-leg and realign it, um, to a single, or into a roundabout with turn lanes. And so with that future improvement in place, we were seeing that intersection actually meeting county standards, um, in the future with the Frog Pond traffic. So really the, interchanges were operating well, um, in the 2040 conditions. The, the failures that we saw were along Stafford Road there, near the Frog Pond neighborhoods at Colley, Frog Pond Lane and, and Brisbane Street.
And Jenna?
And really that's because we didn't, oh, yeah.
So just, can we slow down and go back to this Stafford Road, 65th Avenue? I see, I see some, uh, some scratching of the heads on the part of the commission, so maybe just kind of explain that a bit more, how that's used? What are the assumptions for the condition, for the future conditions there? Which, and as I understand it, and you can add to it, is the, I mean, it's in, it's a high priority project for the county to fix it. It's not a cheap project, but it is a high priority project. And so, eh, this scenario assumes that those improvements are made within the, the timeframe, the 2040 baseline that we're looking at. So I don't know what else, what other clarification, because I know that's, that's a FAQ definitely on, on this topic, so, um, anything else you'd add there?
Oh, that's a good clarification, thanks for, for pointing that out. Yeah, that, that is a county project that they are leading, and the city staff has been involved in kind of informing the county of the changes and, and plans for this Frog Pond area that, like I said, influenced that intersection because it is such a gateway, um, point for, for neighboring cities to get to I-5 to, to, you know, access Wilsonville itself. And so, yes, for the 2040 conditions we analyzed, it assumed that high priority project was built.
Are we ready for the next slide, Jenna?
Um, yes. So looking at those three intersections that on the previous slide in red, what, these are the intersection improvements that we are recommending. So at the Colley Road intersection, a single lane roundabout, um, and similarly at Brisbane Street, a single lane roundabout. Um, at Frog Pond Lane, we're recommending, uh, stop controlled, um, but with a median turn lane restriction. So if you can kind of see on that graphic there, we are, we would permit right turns out of Frog Pond Lane onto Stafford Road, but you would not be able to cross Stafford Road or turn left onto Stafford Road from Frog Pond Lane. Um, if you were on Stafford Road, you could make a turn, left turn off of Stafford onto Frog Pond Lane though. So we would make cuts in that raised median to allow for that left turn movement, just, just because that's such a high access for, for inbound vehicles to, to access the housing there. So that's the recommendation for that location. And with these three improvements, that these three intersections, um, the intersections would then meet the LOS standard for city, for city level service. And while the, I'll say, while the turn restrictions there might seem a little restrictive, really the roundabouts serve as opportunities for drivers to, to make U-turns, um, and reroute to, to go the direction they're wanting to go. And additionally, local street connections are strong on both the west and east neighborhoods, such that vehicles that are anticipating that turn restriction can, can reroute and navigate themselves to either Brisbane or Colley where they can make a left turn onto Stafford or cross Stafford Road. Um, and like I stated earlier, with these intersection improvements, um, you know, the, and, and like Dan alluded to earlier, these are not that different from what we were recommending in the Frog Pond master plan, area master plan, that was just a more high level, and, and we're now at a point where we've got a more refined recommendation. And really the recommendations there previously were signals or roundabouts or turn restrictions of some com- And really, the recommendations there previously were signals or roundabouts or turn restrictions of some combination at those intersections. And now we're just at a point where we would recommend the roundabouts at the kind of north and south end of that turn restriction at Frog Pond Lane. And now that we have additional knowledge, such, you know, traffic volume data, we have more land use data, safety needs, and existing development now in the west neighborhood too, kind of all informs those decisions about what those recommendations are at those three intersections. Lastly, on Advanced Road and 60th Avenue there, kind of on the south end of that figure, we recommended a single lane roundabout. There's no operational deficiency there, but we recommend it there for safety. And kind of, those single lane roundabouts act as a gateway transition point between the rural and the urban areas that are kind of present on Advanced Road there. So it'll help kind of slow down traffic, serve as like a gateway to notify drivers that you're entering a residential area. And so that's a recommendation for that intersection. Fine. And I want to spend a little bit of time talking about just some of the advantages and disadvantages of single lane roundabouts. Really, a lot of the advantages center around safety and speed. So you reduce delay significantly on those minor streets when you have those single lane roundabouts. If you can imagine a stop-controlled intersection, vehicles having to stop at the stop sign, yield to cross traffic, that can create quite a bit of delay. But with a roundabout, all those approaches are given equal opportunity to enter the intersection. And so that really helps alleviate a lot of the side street delays that we're seeing on those intersections along Stafford Road. Roundabouts also tend to slow traffic speeds. Those circulating speeds in roundabouts are designed such that drivers are going 15 to 20 miles per hour. And that really plays into the safety benefits, which research has shown that fatal and injury crashes are reduced by up to 82% with the conversion of a stop-controlled intersection into a roundabout. Another benefit, safety benefit, is the reduction of conflict points for vehicle, the vehicle conflicts, as well as vehicle to pet and bike conflicts. You just, with the roundabout, can reduce those chances for crashes to occur. And lastly, specifically for these roundabouts, again, at Colley Road on the north end of the development and then on the east end on Advanced Road and 60th, those two roundabouts will serve as clear gateways between the higher rural area of Stafford and Advance and transition people into those more urban areas of Stafford and Advanced Road adjacent to the development. And of course, you have to speak to the disadvantages of roundabouts. Roundabouts often can increase delay on the major street. Again, if you imagine that stop-controlled intersection and you've got vehicles flowing freely on that major street unimpeded, but now with the roundabout, they have that yielding action that they have to perform. And but ultimately, the balancing of vehicle delays on all of the approaches result in a significantly reduced delay for all the vehicles total of the intersection. And it really improves the safety for those minor street vehicles. So I consider it a disadvantage, but it's overshadowed by the benefits of the roundabout. Secondly, the roundabouts are often seen as difficult for larger trucks or agricultural vehicles to navigate, but there are design solutions out there for roundabouts to be, you know, friendly for trucks and school buses and agricultural vehicles, such as Mountable Center Island. You know, example in the city of Wilsonville is the Kinsman Road, Beckman Road roundabout, which was designed for truck traffic because it is located on a city truck route. And I believe it operates very well today. And, you know, the roundabouts that we're recommending on Stafford and Advance here are not on city truck routes. And so you would likely see lower truck volumes. But again, design, design modifications can be made to accommodate those vehicles that would be using the roundabout. Another disadvantage is they can often be difficult for young, school-aged children, pedestrians and bicyclists to navigate and cross. However, again, design improvements can be added to roundabouts. We can add push-button RFPs to kind of bring more attention to those people in the roundabout that want to cross. Those are some additional considerations for safety for pets that we can consider at those locations where we're recommending roundabouts. And the city and the school district have met about these roundabout recommendations. And that school district was supportive of these roundabouts, specifically noting that the speed reduction is a huge benefit. And lastly, typically, roundabouts require a larger footprint and sometimes require a right-of-way acquisition. This disadvantage is especially true for very developed urban areas, but the Frog Pond area is majority undeveloped. And so we'll have a lot of flexibility to acquire any right-of-way that's needed without impacting existing development. And so I think in the context of this project, it's a very minor disadvantage. Next slide, please. And again, in addition to identifying operational improvements, here's a look at the pet and bike projects that we've identified for this area. So kind of working our way around, we have with those single lane roundabouts at Colley, Brisbane and 60th and Advance, that locations one, three and six, we've got appropriate pedestrian signage. We've got two-stage crossings with a median on all four approach legs. And so those would be standard pedestrian bicycle improvements for single lane roundabouts. At the intersection two, at Frog Pond Lane, where we have recommended those turn restrictions, we would make cuts in that median to allow for a pedestrian crosswalk. It would be a two-stage crosswalk, so they would be able to cross one lane of traffic at a time and kind of shelter in the median area and then cross over the other side. And again, RFPs or other pedestrian enhancements could be added to those intersections if desired. Skipping down to Advanced Road at locations four and five, we're recommending a school crosswalk right there at the intersection of Advance and 63rd, which is the access to the middle school, the new middle school there. At location five, at that mid-block location, we would be recommending a crosswalk with a median, just in anticipation of the park use there on the south end and neighborhoods on the north side of Advanced Road and kind of the desire for people to be walking and accessing those facilities to the south. So that would be another pedestrian improvement recommendation for that area. Last slide, please. Lastly, we'll just take a look at the cross-sections of Stafford Road and Advanced Road. So they're fairly similar looking for Stafford Road. We would be widening to three travel lanes. So that image there shown is actually an excerpt from the Frog Pond West master plan. To give you an idea, it would be the three travel lanes, planter strips, sidewalks and bike facilities. And those bike facilities could look like multiple, we have multiple options. You could look at a multi-use path along the east side of Stafford Road. You could look at a two-way cycle track, protected bicycle lanes. And those are all viable options for this area. For Advanced Road, similarly, we would be looking at widening to three travel lanes, including planter strips and sidewalks, bicycle facilities. However, we are planning to match whatever the Beckman Road project, which is currently in design. Whatever that project finalizes as, we would want to carry that through to Advanced Road. So whether that's multi-use path, a two-way cycle track or protected bike lanes, I think those are all currently being considered for that project. So that concludes the presentation on the transportation findings and recommended improvements. I'm happy to answer any questions now.
Great. Thank you. I'll go to the right first. Commissioner Stensky?
My only real concern is with the Advanced and 60th roundabout, just because it's so close to the school and the park. What sort of advanced safety precautions will be taken? Because there will be probably schoolchildren crossing there. And I see obviously some crosswalks, but I just would like to highlight that that should be an extra safety precaution for that neighborhood, for that roundabout specifically.
And we've discussed it, I mean, this week directly with the school district and how to plan it. And they like it also for bus and traffic circulation, having buses go out that way rather than being queued at a stop-controlled intersection. But, yeah, I mean, that certainly may be a place where there's extra flashers. You know, you can space them out to increase visibility. Is definitely, I think, on the designer's radar to do that.
Great. Okay. Yeah, that was my only concern.
Great. Commissioner Wood?
Yeah, question on the roundabouts one, three and six. You know, when I look at the crosswalks there, it seemed pretty close to the turning portions of the roundabout. And I'm wondering there if you can help me understand the distance there? I'm a little bit concerned that traffic coming around these roundabouts where the crosswalks are, that, you know, it's potential for an accident or for hitting someone if it's too close to that.
Yeah, typically, those crosswalks are placed far enough back from the circulating traffic, such that a vehicle could be completely out of that roundabout and already onto the road that they're traveling on without being in the crosswalk. So it's usually about a car's length or more away that the crosswalk is from that roundabout, the actual circulating lane. That gives an opportunity for vehicles to feel comfortable to stop for pedestrian without feeling that they're going to get, you know, rear-ended by someone else in the circulating part of the roundabout. I don't know the exact design parameters, but there are, you know, design distances that are standard for where those crosswalks are placed, with safety in mind.
I bring that up because, you know, the way that this is drawn, it looks pretty close there. And you brought up a point that I want to reiterate again as well. Some car traveling behind another car, they could stop the car in front to, you know, let someone go across the crosswalk. In other words, what I'm saying is that it looks very close to the roundabout. I mean, if this were shown a little bit further down on the diagram, I wouldn't have this question. But I think that's a very important point that we need to look at to ensure that cars coming out of the roundabout have certainly enough time to stop if someone is in the crosswalk, but also for traffic that is behind the car. So I just think that's something that we really need to look at.
Yeah, the concept figures shown are not to scale. They're very much so concept, you know, icons. And so those aren't, you know, great indications of what you shouldn't necessarily expect to see out there.
Would we expect to see?
I appreciate the concern.
Would we expect to see a roundabout designed similar to the roundabout at Beckman and Kinsman from a crosswalk perspective? Is that a representative design for this area?
Trying to remember the crosswalk. Trying to remember the crosswalk out there.
It looks like it's got about a one to two-car gap after you get out, after you exit the roundabout before you get to the crosswalk.
Yeah, similar design.
Yeah, yeah. That would be pretty standard, yes.
Commissioner Gallagher?
No, I'm good.
Great. Commissioner Willard, go ahead.
I like the idea that there's roundabouts that separate the urban higher speed and when you enter the neighborhood. I live at Wilsonville Road at the far west side, and people come flying in from that country road. So I think that's a good traffic calming feature.
Great. Commissioner Mazzbo?
I'm good.
Commissioner Carr?
Mr. Pauley knows I love me traffic studies, so. I just, I was just a little confused, the difference between table four and table five, how the volume through it increased after we made improvements. And this is on the Stafford Road, Calley Road. So are we expecting, if we do improvements, more cars are going to go through it?
So the volume difference between those two sets that you were looking at, that was because of the turn restrictions at Frog Pond Lane. So when we assume that left turn.
Stafford and Calley's a roundabout.
Yeah, so when you assume the turn restrictions at Frog Pond Lane, that traffic can't turn left or go across, so they have to go somewhere else. So some of that traffic we had to assume would go up north of Calley or make their way down to Brisbane. So the volumes at Brisbane and Calley were higher in those scenarios because we had to reroute some of that traffic. It has to go somewhere, so.
Well, it's just higher at Calley, not higher at Brisbane. All right.
It should be above.
Yeah. Went from 85 to 78 in Brisbane, but 65 to 99 on, so you're assuming everybody's going to go up to Calley and go around?
Yeah, for folks that wanted to turn left out of Frog Pond Lane, go north on Calley, using those local streets to get up to Calley and go north from there.
So we're probably going to see more people coming south because that's coming in from the country. I was just confused by the numbers.
Correct, yes. Yes, a lot of the growth is in the southbound direction on Stafford.
But yeah, I like the roundabout idea. I'd love to see a roundabout at Stafford, 65th and Ellicon. Next year.
Submit a comment card somewhere.
Yeah, I'll put that on a comment card.
Yeah. Okay, so the one, so I like the idea of the roundabouts as the entry feature. The one concern I have is the roundabout at Advanced and 60th. We're saying that that's the interface between the rural and the urban, but that's not the interface between the rural and urban. You have two to three, looks like, intersections that are east of that. And so what are we going to do from a traffic calming perspective to address those streets that are going to have, that will occur, that people will be flying into before we get to that roundabout?
I mean, you'll have your median, your lane markings, potentially icon street parking, so some of those urban things that will start to signal. But also, you're not having pedestrian bicycle conflicts yet.
Is there no crossings on Advanced east of 60th?
Correct.
Okay.
So that would probably be, I mean, if we were to look at that in the future, I think that'd be a consideration because you don't have the slowing traffic until that. So really try to get the bike and pet crossing at that safe intersection at 60th.
Okay. All right, that makes sense. And then just a, from a report perspective, when I read it, it was confusing to have figures one and two first without having seen figures four and five. So I looked at figures one and two and I was like, well, wait, why didn't you show that data in there? And then when I read four and five, I was like, okay, I see where it is now. So it was more just an order of operations, saying it would have made more sense to me if figures four and five had been first showing, okay, here's all the analysis based on this situation and then the figures afterwards. So that's, but overall.
Yes, thank you for the feedback, but I'm pleased to hear you read through the report. Usually, I put the figures at the front because I assume folks don't make it past the first few pages.
We're pretty good here, so, yeah.
These are half DRB planning commissioners, yeah. They know their traffic reports.
Yeah, we like our traffic analysis, yeah. That's all I have.
Okay. So with that, let's go ahead and if there's other traffic stuff here in a minute, that's great. But let's go ahead and move into water and sanitary sewer with Mr. Mike Carr. So Mike, if you'd like to introduce yourself and take it?
Thanks, Dan. Can everybody hear me okay? I had a few microphone problems. Okay, great. Good to hear. Thank you. My name's Mike Carr. I'm a principal engineer with Murray Smith Associates. No, actually, not associates anymore. Murray Smith here in Portland, Oregon. I've been a principal engineer for a number of years, been working on Wilsonville sanitary sewer projects, as well as Frog Pond Plan. sewer projects uh as well as uh Frog Pond planning for uh, you know, I guess about seven or eight years now. So uh fair amount of experience uh in the area. And I wanna thank you uh commissioners for uh having me here tonight. And I hope to uh get through this briefly and uh take any questions after I get through this. So uh as Dan mentioned, we uh we're talking about water and sewer this evening. Uh, the stormwater piece is still a bit in development, talking with the folks at the city public works uh engineering group and such. So we'll be back to present that uh at a later session, but so we'll talk about water and sewer. Start with water. The scope of this analysis and this plan is is related to uh distribution and storage only. We didn't uh cover the the supply and and treatment of water. That's really covered through other master planning efforts at a higher level. So we're talking about distribution and storage and water. These previous studies have been done here, um, you know, the twenty-twelve Water System Master Plan has has been mentioned tonight. Was the first study that set much of the criteria that was used here. Then there was the Frog Pond Area Plan in twenty-fifteen, and then uh last year there was a a sensitivity analysis that was done that was related to H B, how still two thousand and the middle housing and such. So those studies were all taken uh brought into into this and and used as context. So uh as far as planning out water infrastructure, uh public works standards uh are also uh, you know, they're what we apply to uh to laying the system out. The main criteria for distribution of water is fifteen hundred gallons a minute uh to all areas in the city. That's based on a on really a typically a fire flow demand issue where a fire needs to be uh fought and that is the minimum uh supply of water that uh needs to be uh available throughout the development at any time. Second major criteria that we apply is that the system be looped and networked. Uh, we really uh, there's no dead ends or minimal dead ends uh that would be acceptable. That's for reliability, for redundancy, but it also assists in water quality where you don't have dead ends, where sediment and uh and just really water quality can can start to go bad over time if that if that line isn't flushed out. So we've applied that. The other issue or the other criteria here are for commercial areas, a twelve inch water main is a is standard minimum size, and then otherwise throughout the residential areas, it's an eight inch. The next slide. So let's, we'll talk about distribution first and and these uh, this plan here really was laid out at a at a higher level concept in the water master plan and also in the Frog Pond Area Plan. Uh, it it features really a twelve inch water main backbone system that traverses through the Frog Pond East and Frog Pond South area uh in a loop fashion, right? So uh what you can see on the map here is the the pink lines are the existing water mains. The bolder ones are the twelve inch mains that really provide, you know, the bulk of the supply and the ability to flow that fifteen hundred gallons a minute. And um and then the the proposed water mains uh are in blue and the thicker ones are the are the twelve inch backbone. And so uh what we need to do is we have to make it uh connections and extensions of the existing water system. Everything comes up, the the really the primary supply to this area is is Beckman Road. There's a twelve inch main that comes from the supply and storage system on the uh west side of uh of Beckman Creek. But much of your water supply is that way. There is a, there is connection down through Wilsonville Road, so there is a redundant looping connection, but uh the Beckman Road connection is the is the primary one. And so we need to extend that system. So what we're showing here is really extensions north on Stafford Road, east on Advance Road, and then from there, we'll extend north and east into the Frog Pond East neighborhood as seen there, and then also south on southwest Sixtieth uh into the Frog Pond South area. What's also noted on here, uh you'll see up in the kind of up in the upper left corner, essentially, there's a connection, so there's a connection to Canyon Creek Water Line. This is uh, this is a connection that was actually identified in uh at a conceptual level in in both the Water System Master Plan and also in Frog Pond Area Plan, that for build-out of this system to provide additional redundancy for, you know, really for the Frog Pond area, uh including Frog Pond uh West that's under development now, that there should be another connection that's made to the north uh back into the entire water system rather than just relying on Beckman Road. And so there was a connection shown here, uh this really at at a relatively conceptual basis because it's a, it's a, it's a deep ravine. There's a couple of different ways that we've uh considered and talked to internally about how that might be made, whether that's a cross on the pedestrian bridge that might be put in as uh related to a trail, uh or it could be uh, you know, a horizontal direction drill that's put in trenchless to get under the creek, number of different ways that could be done. But that connection was identified. Similarly, there's one down in the Frog Pond South area that would connect down to the existing water system down that comes in really to the the Beckman Creek Primary School area uh where we can connect to the uh the Wilsonville Water Line uh down that way. And again, this is not necessarily needed for full supply, but it is there for redundancy and again for looping to uh to to avoid dead ends. And uh and again allows if there's main breakage or or repair needed or something, you can supply area, no supply water area. Uh, let's see, and then the last bullet, I guess I'll I'll point out here, B P A Easman Crossing, we've got uh up in the, this is up in the Frog Pond uh East area. Again, we're showing what looks to be a little bit more extensive uh layout there of of twelve inch water mains and and the idea here was that this would be, this area at least on Cali Road up here would be developed in pieces. They're they're pretty isolated areas uh at the end of the line and we could, we're really anticipating there'll be phasing of development up in this area. And so for each phase, as the the first phase uh just off of Stafford Road or just east Stafford Road gets built, uh that twelve inch water line should be looped. So that is the little segment that's shown there. And then the next segments, uh the next sub-district early to the east of that uh would also have some looping. And so we wanna make sure that we're connecting back into uh the Frog Pond East system to the south of the B P A right away. And so we showed a couple of different options there. One of them follows the roadway. That was planned uh, you know, in the transit, in the really in the purported alternative. There's also a, that's been a concept that's floated out there about the potential for perhaps a trail uh that crosses a ravine and and so talking to the engineering group, they asked that, uh we show this as an alternative in the study, uh mainly really to give uh developers and 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 folks and planners in the future some ability to just, you know, to work with it, uh, you know, what what's happening phasing-wise and and what actual improvements are being made. Uh, thanks. Uh, so yeah, next slide, really, uh just to cover the storage issue. There's, you know, back in twenty-twelve, um, in the Water System Master Plan, there was identified to be a general uh overall deficiency in this particular uh water system zone. And it's nothing, and and there's a lot more to how much, what a what a considered a deficiency is, but there's operational storage and fire flow storage, et cetera, and it has a has a number of criteria in it. But it was identified back in twenty-twelve that over time that this deficiency would be growing, and there's a C I P project that was identified and it's been on the books for uh, you know, almost the ten years, which is the West Side Tank, the three million gallon West Side Tank. So uh I know it's in the C I P right now. I believe that the city has got it budgeted to start uh start work this year, uh at least this fiscal year, uh and is currently scheduled for twenty-twenty-five. So uh it's it's a storage deficiency that's gonna be needed uh for build-out, but it's it's nothing that's gonna, that should prevent development from occurring. Okay, next slide, thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to water, wastewater. Similarly, I've got three slides on wastewater, talk to you about. Again, the scope that we're uh studying here is really about collection and conveyance of wastewater to the treatment plant uh from the development down to the treatment plant. It doesn't include treatment, doesn't include uh some of the items that you heard about uh a little while ago when they were talking about uh wastewater planning at the treatment plant. So uh here again, previous study's been done, the wastewater collection system master plan in twenty-fourteen, uh the Frog Pond Area Plan happened, and then uh we also did a sensitivity analysis last year, again, related to the middle housing bill. And um public works standards, eight inch minimum gravity is the size. This is, it has a a fair amount of capacity. I think you can, you know, if you laid an eight inch sewer, you could serve uh at minimum slope, you could serve at least a hundred homes. So they're there for that size for maintenance purposes for um, you know, really for maintenance to be able to uh to clean and allow, you know, the solids and things that that people wanna flush down their toilets and such. Uh, as far as public work standards for lift stations, uh the city has public work standards that are uh developed, generally these all have to follow D E Q, Oregon D E Q standards that the their guidelines have created. The city has prepared uh additional standards. One of the things that they've uh they like to have is uh separate buildings, uh small electrical buildings available for housing sensitive electrical equipment, uh sort of things like that, that aren't required by D E Q but uh are preferred by the maintenance staff uh where possible. And next slide. So I'll talk about just uh local service on these two uh two main development areas. Frog Pond East, uh really what we need is uh we have, we can, we have the point of connection for the gravity sewer that's existing now, which is in Beckman Road, and it gets to just about the intersection of uh Stafford and Advance um for with a connection that's been provided to extend the sewer north. And so we're showing a twelve inch gravity main that would go up Stafford Road uh up to the point of Cali Road. We would uh leave a stub there that would be allowed for future extension to the north. It gets the Ellicon Road uh area that's in the urban uh reserve, uh that would be uh that has been planned to be uh connecting in this location or in this area here. Uh, we've got, so what I, let's see, so we also have um, we have some of the, the main area of Frog Pond East is shown kind of in a bluish purple there, uh just northeast of the Stafford-Advance intersection, and all of that area can flow by gravity uh to the point of connection at Stafford and Advance. We're gonna need to lay some uh, e- e- extend, I should say, the uh the sewer that's in Advance Road from the point that uh it turns south into the uh into the middle school. So we'll extend that one further east as well. And those two gravity mains of Stafford and Advance will provide uh at least as much gravity uh services we can provide for Frog Pond East. But there are three areas that topographically they just, it uh, they cannot flow by gravity. Uh, they they flow down towards uh Newland Creek, and so they're identified here in these three smaller basins. We have three small lift stations, one in each basin uh identified as a conceptual location. These are small stations, um less, really the the flow that needs, they need to be built at, uh really is for an operational standard of a hundred and thirty-five gallons a minute uh to to pump through a uh small force main, a four inch uh force main, which is again city minimum standard. And that'll pump back up to the gravity system either up in Cali Road or uh just uh in the uh Sixtieth uh Sixtieth Avenue north of Advance Road. The, I I mentioned the Cali Road system, there's those two basins up there and and we need just a gravity uh extending off Stafford to serve those two areas. It, you know, they can, that the phasing of that area of north is really set up to 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 happen, you know, it 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 needs the Stafford Road sewer extension and that's about it. So going to Frog Pond South, uh most of this area really drains uh topographically, it it flows to the south. There's a little bit of a pocket that can head up, uh that could flow north to the gravity system that's in Advance, but for the most part, this area in pink, uh all will flow south. And so we've shown a uh red dot as an app, uh, you know, as a, an alternative for lift station four. We've got it at the south end of Sixtieth Avenue, and that is one location, but there are alternative locations available based on topography. Really, we just, the key to putting in a lift station is making sure that the bottom of it's deep enough to get all the sewer flows in the area. And it's expensive to build deeper, so we generally try to put the lift stations uh where they wouldn't be as deep, so they get near, that's why they end up near creeks and such. And we have to balance that versus the length of the pumping uh distance that we have to send it back to. But uh in both cases, it has to go back up to the intersection of Advance and Sixtieth because we're shown here. The alternate, the alternate lift station location for number four, we showed uh really on the southwest corner of the school property. If in fact that were how phasing were to be uh coming along in the area, uh if that area to the south of the school weren't to develop soon, uh perhaps that with with the public ownership of of the school site, you might be able to uh, you know, that that implementing that pump station um may be feasible, so we'll show that there. Okay, next slide, please. So uh talking about the off-site project, so um all the sewer has to be conveyed uh down to the treatment plant. There's one way it goes, and that's down uh Beckman Road. And it follows a, currently follows a gravity sewer that's a twelve inch sewer down to to the Beckman Dip uh where there's a gravity sewer that goes down Beckman Creek, down into Memorial Park to a pump station, and then from there it gets pumped over uh across the freeway into the treatment plant. And all of those projects have been identified in the past. They're all C I P projects, so they're all presumably being funded by uh S D Cs that happen in in the Frog Pond area. So uh really shouldn't be applicable in terms of additional funding that happens upon on the on the developments in this Frog Pond East and South areas. Just to run quickly on them, uh the trunk sewer down Beckman Road is a twelve inch, it's being upsized to an eighteen inch, uh that's under design uh with the roadway and bridge, should be done in twenty-fourteen, twenty-twenty-four. Then the creek interceptor that goes from there, uh it's also needed for build-out. It's not necessarily needed for today, uh but it will be needed for build-out. Projects just getting started. The city wants to combine it with the regional trail uh through the creek area and is currently scheduled for completion in twenty-twenty-five. And then finally, the Memorial Park Pump Station where all these flows go to, uh that was a a major C I P project that was just completed uh earlier this year and is providing sufficient capacity to cover uh all all of Frog Pond and areas to the north. So that's my rundown, and um I'll be happy to take any questions, anybody here.
Great, thank you. All right, I'll take a glance at the commissioners, see if anybody's got any water sewer questions. Commissioner Woods?
Yeah, um, just a quick one here. You know, I noticed that on the lift stations on the, there are four. Why is there a alternate lift station four? That's the only one of all of them I see an alternate there.
Yeah, so it was, it, as we worked through with the with the city staff on the plan, we we were recognizing and we're talking about phasing of how these projects would get implemented. And really, that entire Frog Pond South area, as I mentioned, all needs to, uh it's all gonna drain south, it all needs to be pumped, and so for any, almost for any development that happens in Frog Pond South, uh that pump station and its associated force main and gravity sewers need to be start, need to be built. associated force main and gravity sewers need to be start, need to be built at the very beginning. Now, it depends on who's developing, and if the development, you know, in what, as I showed, the the main, the primary station location or the obvious first choice would be at the very south end of 60th, but it's not clear that development's going to occur down there to start with. And in fact, I I don't know any of the particulars about, you know, or specifics about anybody who's down there, but it may be that they're not ready to develop, there's there's extensive costs in bringing the road and the pipes and everything down there, and so typically, these things happen incrementally. But if that station were to be built to start with, at least access roads and pipes all need to be built there. So we got to talking, and I, what I mentioned was that elevation wise, there was this other location that was on on school property, and so we just decided to show that, really to just, again, this is a plan, it gives, you know, planners and designers and developers opportunities to to have other discussions, and it's, those aren't the only two locations.
Another way to look at it, Commissioner Woods, is, so the the three lift stations to the north are all, the whole drainage basin that would go to that lift station is under one ownership currently. So there's no question that when that developer brings in that chunk of land, you know, they can put in that lift station, but in south, there's, it's much smaller parcels for the most part, and so if some of those smaller parcels to the north wanted to develop sooner, then we need some alternatives to, if that, if that property to the south is a long-term holdout.
You can't wait until you're developing the south part of that.
Right, because there's nowhere for the sewer to go.
Okay. The only other question I have is, there's going to be a lot of work on Beckman Road. So, so how's, I mean, is a lot of this being combined with the dip, with the, this, the sewer project, you know, how's how's all that going to be combined there? Because that's a lot of work.
And I know there's, trying to coordinate a meeting with Wilsonville Meadows HOA with the project team on that, but yeah, I mean, the short answer is yes, they're looking to combine as much as they can on that project, including the bridge, the Beckman Road improvement, the the sewer, so that all be part of that.
School, please.
And the school.
Please.
Yeah, so yeah, there's there's coordination going on there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, real quick, Dan, on figure one, so there's two 12 inch mains, one going to Canyon Creek and one going to Wilsonville Road, but the existing, and it was, I think, figure one in your slide deck.
Yeah.
But the existing lines at Canyon Creek and at the Wilsonville Road neighborhoods are all eight inch mains. Is there a reason why we wouldn't be going with eight inch for those connections instead of 12, because you can't use the 12 inch size anyways up and up to that point to where it matters? Does that make sense?
Yeah, Mike, thoughts on that?
It it does make sense, and I I would say that we were following the 12 inch really to provide that continuity. You could put in an eight inch line there. The cost of installing, and this is something we did talk to engineering, with the city engineer, about that, is that we could potentially go with an eight inch, it will provide some flow, it's not as, it's not as robust, but really, the cost of that construction of that line will be significant relative to the the actual pipe material that goes in. And so really, as a very, very small incremental cost, you can go from eight to 12 and almost be the same project cost, if that makes sense.
So the, so the horizontal drilling for eight versus 12 inches?
Was, was, I'm sorry.
So the horizontal drilling cost for eight versus 12 inches isn't significantly different?
That's right, yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay, are we good? Well, thank you, Mike, I think, just last call for Mike before we let him go to bed or do whatever else he wants to do tonight.
Thank you, Mike.
All right.
Thank you, everybody.
So we'll try to be pretty brief on this, I I want to preface this that we will discuss housing variety more, and we can talk about when that is here in a bit, but I I did want to just hit on high level on a couple of things from last time, some good questions that as it's, I mean, it's in your packet, so if you have questions, I'm just going to go really short. If you have questions, feel free to 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 ask for more details. But the first question was whether this particular, in particular, this exhibit from the affordable housing analysis and the the deficit it shows for the highest end, whether that was included Frog Pond West? And the short answer is no. This data is from 2018, Frog Pond West really started developing in 2019, came online. So, and what that really then means for this project is, it's comfortable saying, some, at some extent, some of the remaining area of Frog Pond West, we don't know if there's going to be middle housing or not because of the new HP 2001 rules, but it's comfortable to say there'll be at least 400 to 500 higher end units built in Frog Pond West. Plus addition, there's a, the last subdivision in Villawalla coming online has, is, most of those units are tending towards the higher end as well. And so at most, I mean, again, there hasn't been a full analysis of this, right, in the interim, but based on what I know, I would say at most 200 to 300 units would be needed to meet that, and that's being very conservative. So the draft housing variety where we're limiting, potentially greatly limiting the amount of detached single family that could be built, but still allow that and more to be built. The other good question was about ADUs and kind of where they fall into the affordability, and that information is in the ADU memo, which is, was attached to your staff report. So the analysis really said that to sell for this kind of new, new thing of a four cell ADU that's being sold separately from the main house would be in the 300 to 400 thousands, which is similar to the anticipated cost in the affordable housing analysis of a condo or a small townhouse. So any additional follow up on that or anything else on housing variety, knowing we will be coming back to housing variety?
I'll make the obvious statement, that's really expensive for an ADU.
Well, a whole house will be eight to 900,000, so. So yeah, that reiterates the the challenge of doing market rate affordable homeownership. And even probably the tiny house, Commissioner Woods, would, 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 you probably want to get much less than that from just the land and just the construction materials and kind of those fixed costs.
Yeah, okay.
So the last, any other things about housing at this hour? Okay, we'll come back to it. So, you know, the train, the train's going down the line, so, so we're looking at October 12th work session, and then the schedule that's published in your packet has a public hearing on this in November. We, there are certain items such as infrastructure financing and the details of the development code, which we've drafted, but I know you're not going to have time to really digest that that we already are planning on going into 2023. So really, we tried to put this and tried to put a more concise list of really what is still in front of Planning Commission in 2022 to really work through. Housing variety policy and and the additional discussion around that is is definitely the headline, there, that's an important part of this project, we've had some great conversations, we've been working on this for solid for about nine, nine, 10 months now, but it's an important conversation that continues to build and needs to be resolved. There's a number of other things that are are more, we need airtime to confirm, it probably, you know, it's, I I don't anticipate a lot of discussion or or controversy around these, a lot of these are based on prior, prior work or prior precedent, and, but we still do need to touch on them, that's looking at the project list that comes out of the work you heard tonight, some of the designs of cross sections of streets and trails, and those details, which are an important element of of the of the public realm. We've gotten comments of bike and pedestrian network, and I think we need a more thorough discussion with this group about what are the options, you know, off street, the different options for type of bike and ped facilities and what we're looking at there. And then, we know there's parks and open space, but we really haven't talked about what's going to be in them, so we need to touch on that and share some of the, some of the input we've gotten through our outreach on, which I would just summarize that, is people like the parks in Wilsonville the way they are, and, you know, aren't wanting anything drastically different than what's been built in the city historically, and really like Memorial Park and Villawalla and a lot of areas, so. Then there's the street tree lighting gateway and fencing plan, I think that was a lot bigger of a topic for West, but it's essentially extending what was decided on West, bringing, I mean, one of the central tenets of that is having, using those to kind of tie it in design wise with West. And so just confirming that, don't anticipate that being a huge discussion. And then the commercial Main Street goals and really the policies around that. Again, that one has potential for discussion, but I think we have some good precedent for that with both our plan development and all the work we did with Town Center, the Main Street, design standards, everything we did with Town Center can be a great precedent, and really, the the team's looking at that. So, so you have, that's a lot to put into a work session that is only part of your meeting next month. So, so kind of with this question you see on the slide, first of all, really want to have a discussion of comfort level and how the Planning Commission's feeling about where we are on this project, how much more time we need to really digest it. We do have some specific deadlines for Metro in December, which we're in conversation about how flexible that is or, you know, but regardless, I mean, the deadlines for a lot of this is is imminent. So want to get, do a quick roundtable of kind of comfort level, what are your big questions? How are you feeling about your ability to review the whole thing coming up in the next couple of months? And with that, how does commission feel about a special work session in addition to your regular meeting sometime probably late October or sometime in the next month or so, to really have a focus, couple, two plus hours to really work through the details of this and get to a comfort level where you're ready to have a public hearing?
Let me ask one quick question before we go around. What happens if we don't meet the Metro deadline? Are we put in jail?
We can start all over again.
Yeah, what? Well, I just want to understand what the repercussions are, and and if they know that we are giving an honest effort at doing a good job, is this a hard deadline? Is it a soft one? What is it?
I mean, it it is written into, as a condition of approval to the ordinance expanding the UGB. That said, you know, what the enforcement actions are would be taken is unclear, and there's also the thought that, you know, there may be, Metro is okay with it, but are there other organizations that could sue Metro and the city for not following it? So those are questions too, but I will probably stop there, I probably said too much, I'll leave that question to the city attorney.
Might as well do it.
So are we not meeting in November?
It's a hearing.
It's, it's, so November would need to be a hearing in order for council to have a hearing by the December deadline.
Do we have to?
Have a recommendation in November for council to take action in December. Thank you for that clarification.
So hopefully, I'll speak for the commission when I say that list is more than a 45 minute session.
Yes, yes.
The fencing plan is a meeting.
Yes, yeah, I I mean, I I can see at least three of these that are 45 minutes on their own, if not more. So I'm not sure how we'd go about this without a special work session.
Yeah. Anything to add, Director Bates Show?
A marathon, a marathon meeting? So if you might oblige me, would you either shake your heads yes, if you agree with that statement, or raise your hand, just so I can feel the pulse of the commission on needing more time to discuss these items? Like you, you feel like you need more than an October work session?
Yes.
Shake your head which way?
Well, okay, give me either a thumbs up or a thumbs down to that statement. And then, I guess, let's just feel a pulse, so we can do a special meeting. Would you, I guess I would like to hear from folks about whether that is an evening, a daytime, a, and duration that you think we need. And I don't know that I can feel the pulse on that, but maybe you all can discuss what you're thinking.
Two minutes before nine o'clock, one minute, right? Just kidding, we could take the time you need.
Yeah, I'm open.
I'm better evenings. I'm not opposed to a four hour meeting, but I also understand.
Turn off his mic.
Especially if it involves traffic, transportation studies, right?
Yeah, no, I'm, it's just evenings, I can't.
Four hour meetings, and towards that last hour, it gets to be not productive.
Yeah.
Also gets efficient.
Not productive, efficient, that's true, just get out of our face.
Make sure too, that you have your mics on while you're talking, so we can get you picked up.
I would, I think, from my perspective, think that a special meeting where you're workshopping a number of items on the same topic, the same master plan, and working through those together is potentially easier probably for you than extending a meeting where you're already dealing with multiple topics. It can be kind of difficult to dive deep in one project area when you've already heard potentially two other items or have two other items coming up. I am also trying my best to try to work at thinning your schedule. I remember the luxurious days, didn't realize they were luxurious, when we could just have only one item on an agenda for two hours on a work session multiple times, you have a busy work program, and so I am working to potentially shift things that I might be able to shift, but it hasn't borne fruit yet.
So would, so you would say the October 12th meeting would cover other topics, and then we would add another meeting that would cover these topics, because together, it would work better if they were covered all at once?
I mean, I think it can often be easier to work through, if you're going to have two to three hours that you need to talk about Frog Pond, doing it all together is likely to be easier on you, it may also be easier for the team to get the right people in the room, I'm not sure, but just, I was thinking from your perspective, being able to dive through the various Frog Pond issues all at once rather than spreading them apart would probably be easier.
I think if we were to do that, it's probably more like a three hour effort, given all of this. I mean, I see housing variety policy being an hour long discussion, easily. Infrastructure, not so much, street tree, decent amount, commercial Main Street goals, that's going to take some time, so either two, two hour sessions, or maybe a three to try to squeeze it all in. That's what's running around in my head.
Regular meeting, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so do we do it like the seven, or the 19th? The next week, or do we?
Well, then we can't have more than cookies at that meeting.
I guess we can do that, all right, let me look.
What date, what dates are we looking at again?
We haven't yet, but.
19?
It would just be.
That is, yeah, I mean, if. That is, yeah, I mean, if we were to stick with that, um, the team may want to discuss internally a little bit about, I don't know if we need to discuss what our, when we would have the right content available when, um, to bring it to you.
I think there'll be some effort for, um, me and Dee to work, to kind of poll this group to see your availability, and then we need to make sure all the right consultants are available on that date as well, so.
We can't sign up Joe and his team for, uh, whatever day we want?
I thought, I thought you were trying to make it easy on us.
Well, I, I am, I will still have staff work to poll you and, um, I mean, we could take a poll here and now to see if the 19th works to have a secondary meeting, I'm not sure, um, like, we have to think about the sequencing of items, because we'll, we'll need to work with you on these remaining items and then also getting a draft document in front of you. Um, and so you may either get a draft document with holes and then work on these items or work on these items. And so I, I think there's just a certain amount of sequencing that we need to talk about and then poll you on dates. It's helpful to know now that, uh.
If the 19th works?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that a three-hour work session is what we're aiming for.
On the other hand, if the 19th doesn't work, then you want the following week. Uh, I would only be able to attend via Zoom if that's okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think there is added benefit to us being in person. Um, I feel like this type of dialogue and being able to workshop through things definitely has a better, um, I mean, we've been doing Zoom for a long time and we've made it work. But I definitely felt like even the, um, momentum of this meeting was different by us all being in person. So I think having a workshop-style discussion on some items that we really need to dive into in person's favorable, but we can see what happens once we poll.
I'm in the same boat as Chairman Mesba, that following week, I could only attend via Zoom.
Okay.
But the 19th would?
Yeah, I can make the 19 work.
Okay.
I might have to do Zoom too.
On the 19th?
And I won't be here on the 12th.
I won't be here on the 12th either. I'm in Hawaii.
Zoom. Zoom works from Hawaii.
Zoom went away. That's why I'm going away.
Okay, so it sounds like we have some work to do to figure out logistics of all this stuff.
Yep.
But we need more time.
We need more time.
Yep. It may be workable.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sounds like we agree, we need a separate meeting now, we have to figure out how and when.
Okay.
What's on the docket for the 12th?
In, in terms of what?
What other topics are on the 12th?
Oh, um, well, in your work program here, we have, um, the transit master plan, you have the hearing on the wastewater treatment plant master plan that you heard tonight, and, um, what I am working to make an informational item, the Town Center Infrastructure Funding Plan, because it is not, um, a, like, milestone-driven topic. So providing you with just an informational item in your packet is probably the route we're going to take on that.
It's still an hour and a half. That stuff.
Could be a quick one.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sounds like we need to do a quick go-back on the consideration of the Planning Commission minutes. Commissioner Mesba, you had some corrections?
Yes, yes.
Is there a, uh, efficient way that we can get these, um, recorded into the record for?
Yes, there's just two. Page two of 10 of the first set of minutes, on the second bullet, which starts with Mr. Nakreli replied the larger dollar amount. Further down on that paragraph, optimization project did yet have a dollar amount is what's noted here, it should say did not yet have. So that's one correction.
Is that the only correction for those minutes?
No, there's a second one. Do you want the second one or?
Let's do all the corrections for one set of minutes, vote on that set of minutes and then do the corrections.
It's only on this set of minutes.
Okay.
I don't have any corrections on the second set of minutes. The other correction is on page three of 10 of that same set of minutes, um, towards the bottom of the page, above the bullet, again, where Mr. Nakreli noted, you have, uh, the wastewater treatment plan, master plan, assuming people would be as wasteful as they were today is how it's noted, I meant would not be as wasteful as they were today. That is my quote. Those were the only two corrections that I had.
And Commissioner Mesba, just for confirmation, that's on the July 13th, 2022 minutes?
It is on the July 13th, yes.
Okay, so, um, given those corrections, I'll call for a motion to approve the July 13th, 2022 minutes as amended.
I move to approve.
I second.
All right, uh, any discussion required for those amendments? Seeing none, all right, can we vote on the amendment to the July 13th, 2022 minutes? Are we going to do this as a roll call?
You can just do a voice vote.
Okay, I'll do a voice vote. All in favor of approving the amended July 13th, 2022 minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, okay, it's unanimous. Oh, oh, right, aye, it's unanimous. Um, and there were no corrections on the August 10th, 2022 minutes, so hearing, there are no corrections there, the minutes are approved as distributed. Okay, everything else is informational, I think we're good. Um, I'll get a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
I second. I seconded.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. I will adjourn this meeting at 9:09 PM. Yay.